All right, good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the Boulder City Council meeting of January 15th, 2019. Lynette, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Brockett.
Present.
Carlisle.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Moreso.
Here.
Nagel.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Young.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Just a couple of announcements. One is that we have information packets, our IP, from January 10th is on the Planning Board Use Table Subcommittee, an update, and you can find that on the Boulder City Council website. Look for information packet. The other issue is we wanted to clarify that for open comment coming up, you can speak to us about any issue except for two items that are under public hearing. That is the concept review for Shining Mountain. You can sign up up there to speak for that separately. But then on the B C one and two zones, we already had public comment on that. It was listed as a public hearing, but it was supposed to say, but we already had a public hearing, so we weren't planning on having another one tonight. There's a lot of people sitting here, though, that want to speak to that. Anyhow, so I wanted to pose that to council. We didn't mean for it to be a public hearing, but we did not clarify, we did not make that clear. So maybe we want to, given who's out there in the crowd, we want to...
Yeah, maybe if people might want to come and speak to it now during open comment, if they had come here to speak during the public hearing. I don't know.
Are we filled? We are filled.
Okay. Forget that idea.
I'm going to break from protocol. Can people raise their hand if they came here with the intent to speak to B C one, B C two? Is anybody out there? Okay. In that case, we will go with, we're not going to have any more public hearing since we already had it. Okay. And with that, we're going to go straight to open comment. If you can start with your name and address, that would be great, and each person gets two minutes. And we'll start with Stephen Rowland. Stephen here?
Yes.
Okay, how about Kenneth Peterson? And after Kenneth, if Kathy Joyner could be ready.
Hi, I'm Kenneth Peterson, and I'd like to talk about the location for the North Boulder Library, which the majority of residents in North Boulder are strongly opposed to. The plan for accessing the library on the east side of Broadway would put thousands of extra cars per week on Rosewood, 13th and 14th, which are all narrow residential roads with on-street parking and a maximum safe speed limit of 15 miles per hour. These small roads are too tight and heavily used to safely support the predicted 100,000 vehicles that will access the library annually, and this traffic will put pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers alike in danger. There is sufficient room on the west side of Broadway, so why is the east side being pursued? Simply because the city owns the land and because an architect believes that it has a less obstructed view of the flatirons? This site is one of just a few accessible green spaces in our area, which already has a high enough concentration of asphalt, apartment buildings, retail shops, condos, houses, and restaurants. We don't need more crammed into this dense area. And while the library is being touted as a space for the community, this quiet unofficial park is already used by hundreds of people walking dogs, pushing strollers, building snowmen, and gathering in the field to talk with neighbors at dusk. Boulder seems to be forgetting what makes it stand apart from most cities. Boulder's pro-growth obsession comes at the cost of green spaces, tranquility, and the value of life for people living here. Not every square inch should be filled in the roads, buildings, and parking spaces. Please don't pave over a green space, put in a 30-car parking lot in a 13,000-square-foot three-story building. In case the library board forgot, we already have a pocket library in North Boulder, which is the perfect, unobtrusive size already. If a library absolutely has to be built, it should be built either on the west side of Broadway or in Gun Barrel where the residents actually want it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy? And then Lynn Siegel.
Good evening, Kathy Joyner, and Happy New Year. It's been a few months since I've been before you, and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you again for moving the South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Project along to preliminary design. Still, the Fraser Meadows neighborhood in particular remains at risk of serious flooding events, and we all look forward to the project design continuing alongside the CU South annexation efforts. We feel fortunate that the partnering between the city and CU on this mitigation project has the potential to provide notable and significant community benefit, the most important being the protection of thousands of downstreamers from future catastrophic floodwaters. In addition, significant benefits related to open space, ecological restoration, transportation, and university housing on the CU South property are possible only because of the unique city and CU partnership. This critical mitigation project was originally scheduled for completion in 2018. Now here we are in 2019, and we are not at all clear on the way forward, what that looks like. As you can imagine, the lack of information on schedule only exacerbates the anxiety and stress of so many living in harm's way. We'd like to request that when you hear again from staff on the Flood Mitigation Project on February 5th, that part of that discussion be related to nailing down a clear timeline for annexation agreement and flood mitigation project completion, including a well-defined public process schedule for annexation that adequately reflects and takes into consideration the level of risk to human health and safety that currently exists from South Boulder Creek. Thanks again for your efforts, and we are hopeful that things will continue to move quickly toward a win-win annexation agreement between the city and CU, and that this lifesaving project will finally be completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And after Lynn, Joshua Joyce.
Lynn Siegel, Mountain Heights, Boulder. Responded to someone about Alpine balsam density and the effect on the school system, and I'm just going to read my comment on the blog I'll send it to. The pressure on schools from the increase in quantity of kids coming out, this is regarding Alpine balsam development, coming out of these smaller living spaces when the state permits open enrollment increases not only the cost per capita of educating the kid, but forces kids to commute to school, increasing the costs of that transportation infrastructure and congestion on existing corridors, and expands the walkability city goal of 15-minute neighborhoods. It burdens the taxpayers, which increases the costs of all goods and services, which compounds the demand for affordable housing. Increased property taxes from the speculative market due to new build subsidies for dense, affordable, quote-unquote, micro apartments all over town and especially around Google, opulent, high, and dense senior housing on the urban wildlands interface, with the added expense of high fire risk and the transportation costs of removing a mountainside to construct 250 subterranean parking spaces, as with 311 Mapleton, the multi-decadal cost loss of control of speculative absentee landlords on the hill due to concessions to CU, whose athletic industry pays their football coach $14.5 million over a five-year contract, before bonuses, of which the first-year bonus alone is $250,000. And subsequently, extorting funds from residents who use Airbnb, 7.5% percentage out of a 12.5% total, including the county, state, and RTD, in a quote-unquote "accommodations" tax, as with hotels, when they're planning a hotel on the hill with $250,000 parking spaces, the city's planning this.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thanks.
Joshua? Joshua here? Jamie Morgan? And then afterwards, Carolyn Beninsky.
Hello. My name is Jamie Morgan, currently in Lafayette, because apparently Boulder's too fancy for bipolar disorder researchers to live in. I'm here to urge you to vote yes on opening the severe weather shelter all winter. The severe weather shelter is a necessary and vital service for Boulder residents and should be accessible throughout the cold winter months, regardless of whether or not the temperature is set above the current arbitrary threshold of 32 degrees dry and 40 degrees wet. Temperature can shift rapidly over the course of a night, which can be deadly in a city where it is illegal to use a blanket to stave off the cold. While it is a great step in the right direction, to further protect our neighbors experiencing homelessness, we must also make changes to how the Boulder Shelter for the homeless is run. The shelter currently turns away far too many people seeking a bed. One of those such people was Benjamin Harvey, who froze to death last Christmas after being turned away. Yesterday, a colleague and I went to the shelter to meet with Executive Director Greg Harms on behalf of the Boulder County Democratic Socialists of America to discuss three ways the shelter can operate more equitably and humanely. Our demands are as follows. One, binding third-party arbitration be implemented for all resident grievances so that there is a judicial process for residents who have been wronged by the shelter. Two, all current suspensions be reevaluated by a third party, and anyone sent to the shelter through coordinated entry be readmitted. Three, more people who have experienced or are currently experiencing homelessness be put on the Board of Directors. Mr. Harms didn't show up to the meeting despite having agreed to, so we spoke to shelter management. We asked them for a copy of their employee handbook and their employee training manual modules. Shelter management said no, because, and I'm not joking, they feared it would make them look bad. The homeless shelter is a necessary public service, and it is our right to know how it is run, as we all may have to use its services in the near or distant future. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, and then Maria Krenz.
Hello. My name's Carolyn Beninsky, and today is Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, January 15th. If he hadn't been killed, he would have been 90 years old today. He was one of the most courageous and moral men in the history of the United States, someone that I've drawn inspiration from since I first heard his words in the 1960s. He spoke truth to power in spite of the consequences, and he paid the price. On April 4th, 1967, in his Beyond Vietnam speech, Martin made his first public statement against the Vietnam War. Here are some of his words. Even when pressed by the demands of inner truth, men do not easily assume the task of opposing the government's policy, especially in times of war, nor does the human spirit move without great difficulty against all the apathy of conformist thought within one's own bosom. Over the past two years, as I've been moved to break the betrayal of my own silences and to speak from the burnings of my own heart, many people have questioned me about the wisdom of my path. I'm inspired by these words to speak about the heinous crime of climate engineering that is occurring in our skies. I've known about it for 14 months. I've done the research, and the evidence is overwhelming. There was a bill in the Rhode Island Legislature last year, in 2017, that's being rewritten right now. I will send you the language, and I urge you to ask our state legislators to consider a similar bill in the Colorado Legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. And after that, if David, David could be ready?
Maria Krenz, 1919, Grove Street, Boulder. I want to thank Mayor Jones and Councilman Brockett for attending the Remembrance Day for the homeless who died in 2018, and want to ask the council to please approve keeping the severe weather shelter open every evening until April. As Mr. Fern Haber, Haber, I don't know, pointed out, our temperatures to open the severe weather shelter are higher than Denver's and Longmont's, but that is something that confirms the humanity and compassion of Boulder, and there is no reason to believe that this change would bring people from Denver to Boulder. Denver claims to have a bed for anyone who wants one. I would like to add that I'm aware that the location of the pass-to-home severe weather shelter is filling up, and they may have to turn some unhoused people away. I am sure that we can find congregations who would open their doors those nights, and I would be happy to contact them. So I'm asking you also to approve the cost of two volunteer bridge house staff on a night when they have to turn people away and they are in the church. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David? And then Patrick Murphy.
Good evening, council. I'm David Adani with the Boulder Museum of Contemporary Art. If I want to start by saying Happy New Year, and I would like to thank the City of Boulder for their continued support. I'm here to share some highlights of the museum in 2018. Throughout the year, we exhibited 16 artists through our exhibition program, and the museum was visited by over 38,000 people. Our education program reached over 7,400 students. And additionally, for the summer and fall exhibits of 2018, we partnered with Boulder Valley School District to have Boulder High students visit our exhibitions and on tours led by the artists. Thank you for your continued support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Patrick, and then Don Cody.
My name is Patrick Murphy. I live in Boulder. Muni Naughty List, Take Two, Chapter One. The Muni continues its history of lost money, lost time, and lost opportunities to reduce our carbon footprint. We have now officially spent and lost over eight years and $30 million. Those opportunities, time, and money are now forever lost. Worse, we must now wait for another two years to get a chance to vote to end this waste. If Santa had a naughty list of the Muni monopoly failure, it would be long and include the following. Separation costs that were originally estimated to be $10 million are now over $110 million, taking $4.3 million from the general fund, with no certainty of repayment from Muni profits. Rate increase of 30% just 18 months after day one, as revealed by a cash flow analysis that had to be acquired by legal action, and Boulder had to pay the legal expenses. Outdated and inaccurate engineering and cost analysis as a basis to form a Muni, and a current court case because of that. Ignoring the fact that Excel's new renewables, like the Rush Creek Wind Farm, have already increased stranded costs, and a failure to even include stranded costs in recent cost analysis. In a December presentation by Boulder Energy Future, the stranded cost was given a value of zero in the financial analysis, thus making all the rosy financial projections based on that corrupt. Stranded costs will never be zero. The Muni schedule is supposed to be completed in 2017, but may extend to 2029 just to pay stranded costs, while Excel will be at 80% renewables by 2030, to be continued.
Thank you, Patrick. Don, and then Brittany Gudermuth.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. Happy New Year. It's good to see you. I hope you're happy to see me.
Yes.
What I've done is deliver a petition from Fraser and his friends. About 100 people have signed on to request the council acknowledge the urgency of implementing South Boulder Creek flood mitigation, commensurate with the protection of lives and safety of the people in the flood's paths. I've just heard another plea for climate change action, and this is one of the results. If you don't move, we'll be overtaken by it. Please also assign beginning and ending dates to each of the application reviews process. Currently, there are no dates. There are about five different actions that you have laid out. Those could take from six months to six years. I think we need to bound the process somehow, streamline it a little bit. And once you do that, to please closely monitor the progress, that we stay on track. So another plea, looking forward to working with you over the next eight months. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Hi, Brittany Gudermuth. I am also here to encourage Boulder City Council to vote to open the severe weather shelter throughout the entire winter season and into the start of spring. In November and December, the shelter was only closed for a few nights each month. The savings and costs are minimal compared to the expense and suffering. The magnet theory, which assumes that offering the shelter will attract more people, has been debunked by Boulder's former human services manager and by others across the country. There is no ease of homelessness, and this low-barrier shelter provides temporary relief. People are not leaving the city when the shelter is closed or they are turned away. They trudge to surrounding neighborhoods, and they suffer. Temps above 32 degrees can still be harsh and deadly. We should not be turning people away from shelter based on this criteria. The individuals being turned away not only suffer from homelessness, but many also suffer from mental and physical disabilities. We need to utilize our resources to support our homeless community. In addition to voting to keep the shelter open all winter until April, the city needs to develop an overflow plan for when the shelter reaches capacity. Turning people away on the coldest of nights means high risk of frostbite, hypothermia, and increased risk of death. Last week, I was driving home late at night. At a stoplight was a homeless man shivering with a sign reading "Anything Helps." I stopped to offer him food, which he thankfully accepted. It was 23 degrees. I drove away in my Mazda CX-5, turning down my blaring heat because I was too warm, and I thought, I wonder if this man will make it through the night. I may never know the answer to this question, and I will live with the guilt of not doing more. The city has resources to do more for our homeless community. This is a matter of life or death for some. Please vote to keep the severe weather shelter open every night. Thank you.
Thank you. Adelaide? And then Megan.
Hi, I'm Adelaide Perr. I live in 4524 14th Street in North Boulder. I'm in opposition to the proposed North Boulder Library location. The residential streets can't handle the additional traffic. It will be unsafe for pedestrians, many of us who have dogs, and for the cyclists. As traffic increases, it's going to destroy our community. The increase of traffic impedes the formation of social capital, which we already have in our community. At the last library commission meeting, they presented plans for a 12,800-square-foot building. They talked about a makerspace, a kitchen, quiet rooms, and never made any mention of books. So basically, it's going to be a community center. Proposed site will also add noise and light pollution to our neighborhood. It's going to invade our privacy. People have access to see into my kitchen, living room, bedroom, bathroom, and closet because of the way our windows are, and same with my neighbors. All of our windows face that direction, so it's not possible for us to just close our blinds unless we want to live in a cave. This is just having surveyors out at our house. I had two surveyors taking pictures basically into my living room the other day. So we're going to have to deal with not just the public, but also if it gets built, the construction beforehand. The entire North Boulder area is smaller homes, townhomes, mobile homes, and condos. A monstrous 13,000-square-foot building is not in keeping with the community, and it's also not in keeping with previous master plans or library plans for the community. Several neighbors and myself are questioning our decision to live in Boulder. The city is determined to take away a valuable open space at the expense of our community in favor of yet another building and parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan.
Good evening. I'm Megan O'Rango. I live in Boulder, and I'm also here to speak on the topic of severe weather shelter. I was so heartened to read the mayor and Aaron Brockett's proposal to open severe weather shelter every night. My God, what a simple and elegant solution to prevent human misery and save lives. Thank you both. It's also a gift to a group of people who have so little. I have also been dismayed to learn that there are council members opposed to such a small step in the right direction, and let me be clear, it is small. As the Daily Camera reported, severe weather shelter is already open most nights in the winter, so operating costs would hardly increase. What's more, severe weather shelter is small enough that on extremely cold nights, like the ones we experienced around New Year's, severe weather shelters hasn't actually had enough beds to house the people who needed shelter. Thanks to pressure from committed citizens and devoted local faith groups, the Boulder shelter relented and opened its doors to our most vulnerable neighbors. So severe weather shelter is small, low-cost, and it saves lives. So what exactly is left to debate here? Because we have learned what happens when we don't meet the 32-degree threshold. Wednesday of last week, when the weather was forecast at a low of 33, severe weather shelter was closed in spite of the fact that our temps in Boulder did dip below freezing. Maybe nobody died that night, but can you really tell the difference between 33 and 32 degrees? Perhaps opponents will say that opening severe weather shelter every night makes being homeless in Boulder too easy, that it gives people a loophole so they can avoid going through coordinated entry. So what? Coordinated entry is still a fledgling program that simply isn't serving all of Boulder's homeless yet. We need reliable emergency shelter to fill those gaps. So please, let's not punish our homeless neighbors by risking their lives. I'm a teacher, and I've heard this line of thinking before, that you have to use carrots and sticks to get the behavior you want out of people. But I also know that punishment like this, which is arbitrary, pain-inflicting, and easily avoidable, only teaches one thing, that powers that be would rather see a person suffer and die than admit a failure. Let's give them the gift of nightly shelter instead. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Brady. There's Brady. And after Brady, Beverly Lynn.
Hi, I'm Brady Itkin. I live on 965 30th Street. I just wanted to speak out in favor for opening the homeless shelter during the wintertime, not based on temperature. I can't tell you, like, I lived on University Hill for a while, and I can't tell you the number of homeless people that I saw on nights where it was like 38, 39 degrees, and it had been 60 degrees the night before, and there was not a single person that I wasn't worried was going to be suffering from hypothermia or frostbite when I saw them walking around. I just read through the email that Councilman Weaver sent out concerning how hypothermia and frostbite occurs, and it confirmed a lot of what I had heard. If you're drinking, just because it's 32 degrees outside doesn't mean, if it's above 32 degrees outside, doesn't mean you're not at risk for hypothermia. I mean, your body temperature lowers. This is something that they teach us at CU for bystander training. It's cold out, you drink, you're going to get, you're going to get more cold. It's just a, it's just a fact. If you get wet outside, and it's 40 degrees out, it's going to feel a lot colder than it is. And it's just, I think it says a lot about a community in how we treat those who can't help themselves as well as others. And I strongly urge you to demonstrate that Boulder is a compassionate community. I would really like to believe it is. I'd love to believe that it's compassionate, progressive city. I'd love to believe that it's compassionate, progressive city that is able to respond to this kind of crisis. We've already seen one person in our city limits die because of exposure. Hopefully, this can be one small step to prevent that, and I hope that the other suggestions that have been made tonight to make our homeless shelter system a little bit more compassionate will also be considered as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly, and then Lisa White.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Line, and I'm a resident at 3370 34th Street. I'm a retired director of a nursing program at a community college here in Colorado, and I come to speak to you tonight about the Rocky Flats flap grant in particular. Regarding my credentials to speak about Rocky Flats, my master's is in community health nursing, and I was, I served on the Rocky Flats Citizens Advisory Board from its inception for about five years. I was the health committee. It was easy to call meetings. Specifically tonight, though, I want to talk a little bit about the flap grant, the federal lands access program grant. Boulder is part of the partner group that requested soil samplings at two locations. My questions: How much has Boulder spent toward the flap grant, and how much more will be spent? What is Boulder doing to assure accountability for the flap grant? What is the city doing to assure that the timeline is being met? On the original timeline, we were told by engineering analytics that sampling should have happened in November. Now they're saying the first part of March. Who's following that? Who's tracking it? Where's the accountability? And then just let me close with a brief reminder, because I am an academic after all, and I can't leave without teaching. No cleaning, no remediation, no cleanup ever occurred in the Rocky Flats buffer zone, which is now called the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. None at all, ever. Is that it? Oh, god, I have one. Thank you.
Maybe you can email us the rest of your comments. We'd welcome that.
Lisa, and then Kristin Lawrence.
Hi, City Council. My name is Lisa White, and I live at 21st and Walnut. I'm happy to see that the transportation master plan remains a key priority for the city. The need for sustainable transportation options is clear. There were a lot of great ideas for making sustainable transportation more feasible for people in the 2014 TMP, and I have no doubt there will be lots of great ideas in the next one. Something I find troubling, though, is that while we have been making incremental progress, we are still far from our vision. City staff has identified many transportation projects that would improve the quality of life of people in Boulder, but unfortunately, we are lacking sufficient funding. In addition to the need for funding, the other key hindrance I see is that we prioritize car travel at the expense of making progress on the safety, comfort, and convenience of more sustainable modes. As a community, we need to be willing to sacrifice some convenience of car travel for the long-term benefit of prioritizing sustainable modes. If we continue to subsidize car usage with things like free parking and prioritize car travel times as a key objective, studies show that the demand of that mode is not going to decrease even as we improve other modes. Other cities have made bold changes in a shift of mode prioritization. For example, Liebliana, Slovenia, eliminated cars from their city center. There was pushback in the beginning, but after eight years, the mayor says that 90% of residents would want to keep it closed to traffic. Obviously, there are different solutions for different cities, but I would venture to guess that using some of the street space currently dedicated only to cars, if we were to dedicate it to like buses-only, protected bike lanes, or pedestrianization, we might see similar success if allowed to exist over a period of time. So I ask that you push for bold changes that move us closer to our vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin, then Tom Mayer.
Hi. My name is Kristin Lawrence, and I'm CEO of The Hopper, which can be best described as a science discovery playground meets community beer and wine garden. And I know that many of you on council are very familiar with our project. We've had conversations either in person v. email, and I wanted to thank you all for being so receptive and working so hard at trying to protect our project during this moratorium on a particular part of Boulder. And throughout all of our conversations, I've really felt that you've heard our concerns, and you've responded to them. And I've seen that in the amendments that you're going to discuss tonight in Consent Agreement J. And I'd just like to tell you a little bit more about our project, and that we've been working on it for three years, and that we would like you to consider accepting 3E within your amendments for J, because we are just at the tip of the iceberg of finding out how we're going to adapt and reuse our building. We know bits and pieces that we're going to be able to use. We're a museum use case. That's a complex project. And what we'd like to do is we'd like to make it functional, safe, and incredibly family-friendly. And with your help, which I know that you guys want to support The Hopper, I've heard it over and over again, I just wanted to stand up here and thank you for your help and remind you that 3E is really going to be help what puts us forward and protects our project moving forward. Thank you, and I'll be here for comments tonight.
Thank you. Tom.
I'm Tom Mayer. I am a retired professor of sociology from the university. I've taught there for 40 years. I also work with the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center and with the Democratic Socialists of America. I'm here to talk on behalf of keeping the severe weather shelter open all winter. I'm kind of used to talking about controversial issues, so it's kind of interesting to talk for something which seems so straightforward and uncontroversial as keeping the shelter open the entire winter. Now, one of my areas of research was social inequality, and I can tell you that the reputation of a community is very strongly connected with how well it treats its least favored members. I've lived in Boulder for 50 years. I really love this community. It's a home for my family and my grandchildren and the like. I would like this community to be known for how well it treats its least favored citizens. I would like it to be known not simply for being exceptionally beautiful place, not simply for being exceptionally conscious about environmental concerns, not simply for being exceptionally educated, but also for being exceptionally ethical. And I think what's at stake here is how ethical is this community going to be in terms of treating those people who are least favored and most in need? I think you understand the issue. I will hope you will support keeping the Boulder, the severe weather center shelter open all winter. Thanks.
Thank you. And last but not least, Paula Schuler. Is Paula here?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are.
Hi.
Hi there.
It's me again. Paula Schuler, 4560 Niwot Road. I wanted to continue our conversation about prairie dogs on irrigated agricultural property. You know, you're very aware there's a huge conflict throughout Boulder County on your irrigated ag properties. They were not purchased for the purpose of housing prairie dogs yet, and you've spent millions and millions of dollars on irrigated parcels and let the prairie dogs take over. As a result, prairie dogs are damaging private properties that surround your irrigated parcels. I want to just show you some images so you get a gist of how bad the damage is. So the green and the blue dots are irrigated ag open space properties. And I'm mostly concerned, and, okay, the purple, which looks white here, is prairie dog occupation per open space. These are all documents from open space. And when you put them together, this is a very small sampling of the northern TSA, but you can see on many of your irrigated ag properties, it's densely populated with prairie dogs. This is Stratton. You spent $3.2 million on it. It was a glorious green property. It was fertile. It grew beautiful grass. It provided great forage. Now it's barren moonscape. It wasn't purchased for prairie dogs. It literally blows away when there's a windstorm. The organics are gone. This is Brubaker next to Stratton. 138 acres, you paid $700,096. It is decimated by prairie dogs. It's barren ground also. It's a removal area incompatible with open space management objectives. So our property is right across the street from Brubaker, and there's a constant, oops, I'm going too fast, sorry, oops. There's a constant migration across. That is Brubaker during, oh, shoot. Well, I sent you all this on a PDF, and I hope you have time to look at it, because it's a huge issue for us. I mean, thousands of prairie dogs on our property. So I would like you to manage your own properties, but in the process, be a good neighbor and help us.
Thank you. Just to remind the audience, we don't clap or boo, just so everyone feels comfortable to express themselves. So you can do this if you agree. All right. Thank you to everyone that has come to give us open comment. We're going to close open comment. I'm going to turn to staff to see if you have any responses.
Just a quick reminder that at the study session in December, when you heard from staff in the prairie dog working group report, as a result of that study session, staff promised to be investigating some of the issues of prairie dogs on irrigated open-spaceland and report back to council this spring. And so we are still working on that project, and you'll hear from us in the April-May timeframe.
I have nothing.
Okay. Mary?
I wanted to comment to a couple of folks that spoke with us about the North Boulder library, and in particular, Ms. Perr, who said, mentioned that there was no master plan that mentioned the library. And I would just like to call her attention to the North Boulder sub-community plan. On page one of the sub-community plan, which was adopted in 1995, it says, "A branch library in the village center," right where it's planned to be built. So there is a master plan, and this is one of the values of a sub-community plan, is that it's been there and it should be referred to by neighborhood residents.
If I could just add to that. Also, there was, I just reviewed a 1992 survey that was done of North Boulder residents, and also some of the results from the North Boulder sub-community plan. And the number-one priority for North Boulder residents was the library at its current site. So it's unfortunate. Some are concerned about it, but I would also note, we have a very large community park. Actually, it's our only community park. That is over 50 acres that is within three blocks of you, and that is attached to extensive open space and mountain parks land. And there is a dog park three blocks from you. So while that property has been open for some time, because it has taken us a bit of time to structure the financing for this, the library is very much a pivotal part. It's the cultural, community kind of center, and the library, it does have books. It will have a lot of books for people. And I think in terms of social equity, there's a lot of people up in North Boulder that have been waiting for that library to come so that they could access it and take full advantage of it.
Sam.
I just wanted to take a minute or two here to highlight for our community a really wonderful event that happened this weekend, and Bob Yates and I were able to attend. It was the dedication ceremony for the 16 units of elder affordable housing that has been built on the Trinity Lutheran site. It was a great service, and it was a great way to highlight the collaboration between the city, who has helped put a parking garage in that will serve both the church as well as the units there. And so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who made that come together, the church and the people who will live there, and the city. So it was a great event.
Did you want to add? Okay. Great. Go ahead.
So to Ms. Lynn, who came to speak about Rocky Flats and the flap grant, the funds from the flap grants have already been spent, and we are keeping up to date in terms of the results. The sampling is still on schedule to occur this winter. I sit on the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council. Our next meeting, which is open to the public, is February 4th from 8:30 to 12:30 on Monday. People are more than welcome to come. It is held at Jefferson County Airport. It's not a municipal airport, but the airport. If people want to know where to go, you can contact me. I also want to note that at our April meeting, which will be the first Monday in April, we will be discussing the results of the soil sampling. And the flap refers to just those parcels that are adjacent to the federal land. So it's a small piece of land, and there's several parcels that are adjacent that are being analyzed. Furthermore, the Fish and Wildlife Service plans to do soil sampling at the same time this spring in concert with the flap sampling. So we will be able to get sampling done on what is called the Wildlife Refuge, which surrounds the area that most intense operations occurred on. And so we will have results from that sampling, I would expect, in April, and I will report those back to the council, and those will be publicly available.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to speak about the severe weather sheltering. As you're probably aware, this is the very last thing of a very long agenda, but we will be discussing it, oh, I don't know, maybe around midnight tonight. Want to hang around?
Yeah, so, stay tuned. Okay, I think we'll move on then. Thank you all for your comments.
Your consent agenda tonight is items A through J.
So at least one of these we want to talk about further, which is opportunity zones. But before we get to that, is there anything else we need to discuss in the list? Okay. Does staff want to present this?
Sure. So in front of you, on a buffed piece of paper, you have a memo from David Gier, which, well, it says it's from David wrote it, which was posted today on Hotline. Sorry, I'm not close enough. Which was posted today on Hotline. The memo was intended to address some of the things that were not addressed in the agenda memo. So the agenda memo addressed things that we were trying to clean up after the last hearing. This memo addresses some things we've learned about. You've heard the owner of The Hopper speak briefly about the exceptions that are necessary to allow them to go forward. Those exceptions include allowing the conversion of building a floor space for museum use, allowing for an addition that does not exceed 650 square feet. So the idea there is they wanted to put a little staircase on the outside that doesn't really affect the building very much. And as we thought about this, there'll be minor changes where someone wants to add, say, a double-door entry that will be relatively small and insignificant, and we thought council wouldn't want to hold up those sort of small innocuous projects, so we included it. But this also assists The Hopper. The third one is the demolition of any non-residential floor area that does not result in the removal of any exterior walls. So that would allow internal demolition to do changes. And in their case, they want to create an atrium feeling so that they can have the science and the center, and the children in the bottom, and the adults can socialize on balconies above. So the concept is you can allow interior remodels. And so the And so the thought was that that would, this would apply to anybody, but that the council's intent wasn't to prevent businesses from doing remodels. And so the other, in addition to that, we've suggested an addition of H, which is a public safety exception. This sort of came up recently with a building that has become a public safety issue that really needs to be demolished in the opportunity zone. It's not ready to be redeveloped, but it's causing some issues. And as we thought about it, there are circumstances where buildings are just falling down and create public safety issues and need to be demolished. And we didn't think council intended for the demolition to be held up in those circumstances. You would still get to review any project that was built there, but this would allow for a public safety exception. There were two minor things in addition to that. There was some clarification on the affordable housing, which you'll see on the first page. And then at CAC on Monday, we were requested to draft another recital so that it's clear to anyone who looks at this, that council will consider exceptions. The council is not intending to end all economic activity and that as you've demonstrated, when someone presents an issue that makes sense, you will create an exception. And staff is, has promised to bring those forward promptly on council direction for council to consider. So that new sub-paragraph Q just makes it clear that there will be, the anticipation of council is that there will be additional exemptions coming forward in the future on a case-by-case or appropriate basis, such as when we think about whether or not an accessory outside is something that contravenes council's intent. So that's, if you want to include those, you'll just say that you, in your motion, you would include the amendments in the buff memo that was on your desk and posted on Hotline earlier today.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Questions? Lisa?
I don't have a question.
Anybody have questions about this or the reasoning behind? Any others? Aaron?
Thank you, Tom, and appreciate staff putting together some changes in response to my request and others. One question that's not addressed here was, well, so in G, the ideas that you could demolish non-residential floor area that doesn't result in the removal of exterior walls, I think that's a positive step. What about a change of use? If you didn't, if you weren't changing the building, somebody brought this to my attention, but you were changing from one approved use or by right use to another, would there be anything in this moratorium that would prevent that?
I'd have to think back. I don't think so. Is anybody from Planning here? No. They're shaking their heads violently. No.
Violently? No. All right. So that sounds like a very...
That's about as violent as planning is. Great. Can I call a quick on this real quick? When it comes to the hopper as an example, if they want to apply for the conditional use review, which would be required for them to have a museum use, would they be prevented currently from doing that? Don't think so. You? No. Okay. So, thank you. Go ahead.
So do we need the museum exemption?
That's why I was asking that, because it seems to me that if they're not prevented from coming forward with a use review application, that that's a non-issue.
Here to shed some light.
Chris?
Sure. So Chris Meschek, Planning. Right now, the way the moratorium is drafted is that it prohibits us from accepting building permits, site review applications, and use review applications. So there is a chance that their use review is, could be held up. So the exceptions that were drafted are ways to, based on their current concept, that would allow that to go forward. So we'd be able to take their use review if it isn't going to trigger any of those things in the moratorium.
So let's, I'm still trying to parse out, because I thought Aaron's question was, can people apply for a change, whether it's conditional use review or whether it's a by right use change? And you said that it would be accepted.
Correct. So use changes that occur inside of buildings where you're changing, say, from maybe a technical office to warehousing, that would just be able to occur without being held up by the moratorium.
Even if there were tenant finish changes interior to the building?
Correct. As long as they didn't trigger any of the floor area restrictions that are in the moratorium.
So then let me ask again, if we make the change for floor area, and I have an alternative proposal, but if we were to make a change that would allow, for instance, the hopper to increase the floor area as much as they needed to within the limits of the moratorium, then would their use review application be held up?
I'm not sure I totally track, but I...
Okay, I'll say it again, just to make sure I'm clear. We are considering one of the changes that David proposed this afternoon, was one which allows additional floor area ratio to be added. He said 650 square feet. Okay? So if we were to pass that exception and the hopper application created less than 650 square feet of additional floor area, would they be able to submit a use review?
Yes.
They would? Okay. Thank you. That's clear.
But if we, if we didn't add a museum use exemption, they're probably okay, although I think they'd be more comfortable that they're okay if they actually had a specific exemption. But it would prevent the creation of a different museum if there is, say, an empty vacant parcel and somebody wanted to build a museum on it, it would be included in the moratorium, wouldn't it?
If that museum use was going to add floor area, remove floor area, you know, met some other trigger of the moratorium, yeah. They require a use review and those sorts of things.
The reason I'm asking, I don't mind if we have a belt and suspender thing with a museum exemption here, but what we're learning from the hopper and other projects coming forward, we need to correct the structural things so that they don't apply to other projects. So I'm just trying to follow the structural issues here. And so for instance, the potential change I'm thinking of is instead of saying 650 square feet, which is arbitrary, we could say something like a de minimis addition of floor area, such as 10% or 2,500 square feet, whichever is less. I'm trying to think a little broader than just this project.
No, and I would support that, something like that. I don't think the intention of this moratorium, it kind of came out from nowhere and I don't think we intended to shut everything down. And so I think what we want is to make sure that people who had already been in the process and well underway would be able to move forward as they had intended without any gap. And so it would be important for us to know how many requests or denial, requests we are receiving or denials we are putting out there. Because I really want people to understand that they can appeal directly to the council and that we will listen to their specific issue. And I think there are unintentionally different projects that have been caught up. And so I would like to get those projects that are within these guidelines out of being caught up and being allowed to move forward. I think our biggest concern was some unknown entity coming in and doing something that we had planned on doing, correcting, and providing us something that we want. And so getting a science museum, we spent years thinking on the civic use pad, trying to get a science museum, that a private entity comes up and has this science museum with beer garden? That is just so awesome. So I hope people understand what the intent of this moratorium is and not to keep more properties under the moratorium than is absolutely necessary. And we want to be able to constructively have a vision for some really large parcels in that two and a half square miles that may not be able to arrive there right now, given our use tables. So.
Okay. So are people generally liking what Sam proposed as an alternative to the 650 square feet?
Yeah. And that was to replace F, just to be technical about it. That's an alternative to... Sam, would you read it again? My pen was slow. So something like that creates a de minimis, a renovation which creates de minimis additional floor area, 10% or 2,500 square feet, whichever is less. 10% of the floor area? 10% of existing floor area, so adding 10% of existing floor area or 2,500 square feet, whichever is less. The intention here is to do exactly what the proposed F was to do, but to make it broader and extensible to other buildings and so on. So my only editorial comment was, I would get rid of the de minimis. It's never good to characterize. You've got a clear standard. Just put the standard in. You need to characterize. Okay, that's fine. You bet.
So are we going with a one-time allowance? Or why don't you read the full sentence?
Well, I wasn't thinking one-time allowance, per se. I was thinking just the standard. So what is within the moratorium is anything that exceeds that. And so I don't care if that gets phrased as an exception, because I think that's what F is, right? F is an exception. Yes. So it could be either an exception to the moratorium or the moratorium could be construed to include things bigger than that, or area ratio increases bigger than that. And do you want to, you put the phrase in addition, which is something outside, is, do you want to keep that? Yes. So it should read, "Construction of addition that does not exceed 10% of the existing floor area or 2,500 square feet, whichever is less." Yes. Okay. Got it. I'm sorry, I should have put that on Hotline. I just came up with it later in the afternoon.
Any other thoughts on this?
So I just want to be absolutely clear. On E, the construction of any building or conversion of floor area for a museum use, it does not, stating that particular case does not preclude a change in use of any other kind. We're just calling it out for the purposes of peace of mind for this particular case. Okay. That's, just want to be absolutely clear.
Well, I think, I think if you did a conversion to a museum use, you'd still have to go through a use review process, which are not allowed by the moratorium. So I think this does actually make a difference.
I mean, I'm happy to do it.
And plus construction, new construction.
Yeah, it does, for sure, do new construction, but with the exemption that we just put in or that they had previously put in, I thought we were told that they could do it.
I think this case is covered, but there could be another one.
Okay.
Well, so, okay, so now I'm confused. The first sentence, temporary suspension of accepting building permits, site review, and use review applications. So I don't know, so if you're converting from one use to another, that's a use review? Or is that only for new construction?
I recall, it depends on the use review table, whether, that is, use review is required for some changes and not for others. So if it was a change that didn't require a use review, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't trigger the ordinance. But if it is a change that requires use review, then it would trigger, then this exception would have effect. So this does require, the museum case in all zone districts requires a conditional use review. I don't have the table memorized, but maybe Charles does.
Yep. Can you? Are you coming up?
He's looking.
Ah.
I can look as well. I'm certain in this...
Let's see who gets there first. On your market set.
My money's on Charles.
Okay. Charles gave me this sheet of paper. So museums are in allowed use in MU4, BMS, BC1, BC2, kind of your BRs, your DTs. And then it's a use review in your industrial areas and your BT zones.
So this is a use review?
Correct. So this is a use review.
So without that language, it would trigger a use review and therefore trigger the ordinance. So it isn't really belts and suspenders. It's just belts.
So, I mean, a question is, do we, and Charles, you may need to help answer this, because do we really want to prevent use review? I mean, I think we want a building permit and site plan review, because that's creating new buildings or doing significant changes. But use review, I'm not sure, how much do you have to know about a building and its changes to be able to do a conditional use review?
Well, can I add a question on top? Is this, are we talking about converting, oh, I don't know, shopping malls to office space? I know that one's already in, but for example, conversions, would that have otherwise triggered a use review?
I think if we step back and look at what the intent of the ordinance was, first, it was stop building permits and essentially discretionary review applications of people working towards a building permit process. So I think that was the intention of why we put use reviews in in addition to site reviews and building permits, was let's not have somebody enter into a process where they're going to get stopped by a building permit at the end. So I think that was the intent of why to include it in the first place.
I agree. So then, Mary?
We want it in there. We're making an exception for museums.
And we will, if there are other exceptions on a case-by-case basis, we'd be happy to bring them.
And hopefully we'll move relatively quickly in releasing areas, so. Okay. So with that, would somebody like to propose the motion for the consent?
I'm... As amended.
As amended.
Comment?
Yeah.
I'll just, a comment. I'm going to vote against J, not because, I love the hopper. I think you guys are great. But as I said, back in December, when we passed this ordinance, we're going to spend a lot of time, over the next several months, picking winners and losers. Congratulations, you're the first winner. Ding ding ding. I suspect there'll be others winners that'll be coming in front of us. And we spent a lot of time doing this. And so the way this is set up is, this is a reaffirmation of an ordinance, which I voted against, and so for consistency, I need to vote against it, but I'm happy that the majority will grant exceptions to the hopper.
And I'm a little, I'm a little stuck here, but I agree with Bob, some principles. But since this amendment is moving only in a positive direction towards allowing worthy projects to move forward, I think I'll go ahead and support this, even though I continue to not support the original moratorium because of its ability to stop projects just like this, except we picked this one out and are letting it go forward, which is great, but others as well. And I'll just call out the, we got an email about potential project at 3100 Sterling Drive, which I think sounds really promising. It's on a vacant parcel, would be a small business incubator space focused on climate change technology. So it sounds like a really promising thing. It's the kind of thing the exemption process could allow us to allow to move forward. But I just wish we didn't have to take the time and we could let good things like that just happen.
It'll be another winner.
Could I, could I comment on 3100 Sterling Drive, which is the parcel you just referred to, Aaron? I spoke with the property owner this afternoon and in her email, as well as in our conversation, she mentioned that the idea would be to lease out office space to startups at below-market rate. So that could possibly fall within the community benefit ordinance and so could possibly be one of, one of the things that could happen. So it's not totally precluded, but I think what I'll say about the opportunity zone moratorium is that if it would have happened a couple of years from now, things would have been peachy, because we would have had a lot of things in place. But it's the timing.
Will you propose that we do something about that or just?
Well, I don't think we have an exemption process in place yet. It's like we probably have to do one thing.
Can I ask Aaron a question? You had proposed exemption for E gauges as well. Is that? It's the same one. It's the same, it's the same one. Okay. 3100. Got it. Thanks.
And I would be supportive of it and I would just encourage them to come forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. There is an appeal process. So I just, I'll reiterate, people who are stuck in it, who feel that they're not changing things or that we might give them an exemption, you should come forward.
Okay.
Okay. So roll call vote. Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Morzell?
Aye.
Nagel?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yates?
Aye, all, except all, on all, except for J, and nay.
Young?
Yes.
Brockett?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Yates, nay on 3J.
Right.
Your first public hearing is a continued concept plan review for Shining Mountain Waldorf School.
There's only four of us on it. If I leave.
Oh, yes. Changes the numbers.
Still have to have five, I guess. We just can't have more than three people absent.
So we'll turn it over to Charles Farrow and Shannon Muller.
Great. Thanks very much. Good evening, members of council. Shannon Muller will present staff's analysis tonight.
Good evening, council. We have a short staff presentation for you. So this hearing is a continuance of the public hearing from July 24th. On the...
I'm going to ask you to speak up.
Yes. On the Shining Mountain Waldorf School Concept Plan Review and Comment. So as with all concept plan reviews, no formal action is being taken tonight on the project. This step is meant to provide guidance and comments to the applicant. So a quick summary of the process so far. In February 2018, the application was submitted, the site was posted, and property owners notified. Staff comments were issued, and the applicant hosted a neighborhood open house. In May, the planning board hearing was held. In June, city council called up the concept plan. In July, the related zoning, rezoning request along Broadway was withdrawn by the applicant. And also in July, the city council hearing took place. This included staff presentations and applicant presentation. The hearing was continued at council's request to allow for a high-level update and review of the concept plan related to permanently affordable housing possibilities on the site. So to briefly go over the context, the property is 11 acres. It's in North Boulder, near Broadway and Violet, and contains the existing Shining Mountain Waldorf School. The BBCP land use designation for the site is primarily low-density residential. The north portion of the site, the north portion of the site is zoned RL2.
With vigor.
And the south portion is zoned RL1. It is within the North Boulder sub-community plan, and there are guidelines for the Union Utica Neighborhood and development guidelines for all neighborhoods. The majority of the proposal is within the 100 and 500-year floodplains, and the site was impacted by the 2013 flood event. At the July hearing, council discussed several key issues, including making the development as safe as possible regarding flooding, and suggestions were provided regarding the street layout, parking, and traffic. The overall site plan and development along Broadway was discussed, and permanently affordable housing on the site was discussed. So following the hearing, the applicant provided a high-level update to the proposal. Two possible concept plans were provided as part of council's packet. Generally, the changes included a reconfigured street layout, retention of additional land by the school, and relocation of the proposed high school building, and open space along Broadway south of Locust, and options for townhomes or multi-unit flats at the corner of Violet and Broadway. And the proposal would no longer require a rezoning. So that concludes staff's quick presentation, and I'm happy to answer any other questions before turning it over to the applicant.
Everybody pretty clear?
Just one real quick question. Your parting sentence was, would no longer require a rezoning. Just refresh my memory, what that rezoning was to be, from what to what?
Yeah, originally, the proposal included a rezoning along Broadway for the portion just south of Locust. It was proposed to be rezoned from RL1 to RL2. So you can kind of see it in that green area on the smaller map. The applicant withdrew that rezoning request. So this new proposal wouldn't include a rezoning.
But didn't it discuss an option where it could be rezoned, or?
I think, yeah, I think Adrian can talk more about the different options they've considered over the last, yeah.
Okay, Lisa has a few questions.
So the applicant is going to give a presentation? Okay. And I just have, it's a technical question, and I can't remember which ordinance it is, but it has to do with our floodplains. And in that, there's just two areas really that were affected on that property by the 2013 flood. And there's some ordinance we have that requires the longitudinal axis of the building to be oriented so that it is parallel to the flow. And in this particular case in 2013, and I assume in most cases, the flow would be from northwest to southeast. Yet the lots in this parcel are subdivided or platted such that they are north-south and oriented. And so if you oriented the building so that it was parallel to the flow, you would lose square footage on the buildings. So I guess my question is, how has that been
I think the applicant can address that.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Okay, so maybe we should hear from the applicant. Hello. And can I just put out there that, two things I know that we're interested in, in addition to the flood piece, is the affordable housing.
Yes.
Okay.
We're prepared to address that.
Excellent.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Jane Zender. I'm the school director of Shining Mountain Waldorf School located at 999 Violet Avenue in North Boulder. Last spring, we shared with you our concept plan, which is the image you see right there on your screen. Last July, we actually shared with you the possibility that we may be, may have been able to hold on to a parcel of our land. At that call-up in July. So this is what we shared with you last July, and we were asked by council to come back and explore affordable housing options on a 45,000-square-foot parcel located on the northeast corner of our land holdings at Violet and Broadway, and that's parcel E that you see on the screen. We listen to you, council, our community, and our neighbors. Let me briefly summarize the steps we have taken in response to your request. As the result of a generous gift from an anonymous community member, we are now able to retain the parcel of land along 10th Street and Violet Avenue. We call this parcel Shining Meadows. Our new high school plans have been moved to this parcel. This change not only allows us to retain a larger playground on our lower school campus, but removes the high school parking from Cherry Street, minimizing traffic impacts along Cherry. It also allows us to have a separate high school campus for our older students, and provides additional open space for the density calculations on this corner parcel. For the past six months, we have had multiple meetings with three affordable housing developers, plus a proposed partnership between two of them. All three organizations invested a considerable amount of time and energy to consider an affordable housing project on our parcel. We received four proposals, three for purchase and one for a land lease agreement. In addition, Shining Mountain spent over $30,000 of our own money, and a tremendous amount of staff, board, and faculty time to respond to your request to find a path forward for affordable housing on our site. The money we spent on this could have been used to raise the pay for our teachers. And for a school like ourselves, it was a considerable investment of time as well as money. For the three purchase proposals we did receive, all three proposals required 50 units on the parcel, plus the school selling our land far below what we believe the land's market value is, to make it work for the affordable housing developers. The RL2 zoning and open space calculations that we currently are zoned for would only yield about 40 units on that parcel. In addition, our board was unwilling to consider a land lease deal, as it is outside of our mission as a nonprofit educational institution. I have an email that Jeremy Durham, the executive director of Boulder Housing Partners, said I could share tonight, and you each have a copy. He wrote it on Friday, January 11th. Dear Jane, I wanted to reach out in writing to thank you for your continued efforts to make affordable housing a possibility as part of the development of the Shining Mountain property in North Boulder. After trying several different approaches, neither BHP nor a partnership with BHP and a private developer were able to find a structure that would result in a wise use of limited public resources. The best solutions we could identify would still require far more subsidy per unit than has ever been awarded in Boulder. Thank you for your patience and diligence over the past year and a half as we've explored this. To make affordable housing work, the school would need to undergo not only a land map use and zoning change, but sell our land far below its value, which we are really unable to do as a 501(c) nonprofit organization with a fiduciary responsibility. By selling our land below market value, we would also not be able to raise the necessary funds to rebuild our school. The entire intention of letting go of some of our land holdings is to be able to build a new school. You're well aware of the school's need to replace our temporary 35-year-old classrooms and make the school code-compliant and safe for our children. Based on the investment of time, money, and feedback from these affordable housing developers, we believe we've done all we can on our end to pursue an affordable housing project on this site, and we're asking for your support to move forward with market-rate housing on that portion of our site. Thank you so much for your support of Shining Mountain, and I'd like to turn it over to Adrian Soffer, who will walk you through those options.
So I hope I can just go back to what we showed you at concept review. Adrian Soffer's, 1731 15th Street. So I'm not, there we go. So at concept review, planning board saw this diagram, which actually showed a lot more housing on the, well, it showed housing on the northeast parcel of the site, and all of the school land that currently is intended to be retained is the six acres to the northwest of the site. Because of the generous gift of major donors to the school, we now, as Jane had just said, are able to retain the parcel where we're showing the high school, and then sell off the northeast corner of the remainder for some form of housing. We've had the opportunity also to look at what housing options might be. And one option would be to do a townhouse project. This is showing, I believe, 18 units of townhomes, all fronting onto public streets. And another option we investigated was if we did affordable housing on the corner, showing in this scenario, 40-plus units at about 600 square feet apiece, plus some common areas. We've also looked at a version where we did a larger senior housing in the same basic footprint, say 1,000-square-foot units, 30 of them, all of them with the same basic lot area that we're showing. But the key to having any kind of housing on the site, whether it's affordable or market rate, is that the, the open space, which is all on the Shining Mountain parcel and north of Locust, which is all in the RL2 zone, that open space contributes to a density of housing. The reason I included the first slide, the first slide, was to show you how much more open space, very roughly, over twice as much open space as we previously had shown. Planning board had questioned whether the housing density that we were showing could be supported by the open space calculations. We're going to have to come back a site review and go through this in detail. But the basic point is that the school contributes a tremendous amount of open space, and that open space will be reviewed as a part of the site review. But that open space, even though it's closed during school hours, would be available to the public during non-school hours, and those non-school hours are equal to 80% of the time that public city parks are open. So we believe a case can be made to support that amount of open space, providing utility not just to the residents, but to the community as a whole, under those kinds of agreements between the city that we also made at the Spark Project, where that various portions of the site would be open for certain hours for use of others. So that was the other part we wanted you to be aware of, is that we are still trying to say that, that the school provides open space that can support a density of housing, and frankly, denser than what we're anticipating as a market-rate project. While as an affordable project, to get 50 units is what our affordable partners were saying as they needed, it would be a tighter stretch, but it was not out of the question. In terms of rezoning, you asked the question, and we had pulled the request for a rezoning prior to the call-up, which came back six months ago. You had asked us to look at what opportunities we might have for affordable housing, which Jane has reviewed. We did not feel necessary to take the strip along the southern portion of the site along Broadway to rezon that, even if we did do affordable housing here, because it was not yielding enough units to put us significantly higher than what we were showing before. If rezoning were required, it could always be done by the city. If the city wanted to purchase the land, that land is for sale. There are still options available. And I'm sure that there are board members here who can speak to any questions you might have about that. And we still have another minute and a half here, if you want us to address specifically water issues. Charlie Hager, our civil engineer is here, and we can take a look at that with you now, or wait until you have questions. So I'm putting up a map, like, oh, this is just looking at the amount of open space that we can dedicate, but that we can come back to with site review. And then in terms of the maps, Charlie can go over those for flood issues.
Charlie Hager, civil engineer, principal at JVA here in Boulder. So 43 seconds. So essentially, we look at the flood, the flood codes, both from FEMA and the city of Boulder, and we take them all, and we have to put them into context. So there was one that's brought up specifically about the alignment of the axis of the building. It says that in a big picture, we're in the 500-year floodplain, we're in the 100-year floodplain. We are not in a conveyance, which FEMA calls a floodway. We're not in a high-hazard zone. So the context of the alignment is to try to align them when you have a lot of flows. It also says you can align them parallel to the neighboring building axes. So you create kind of a flood shadow. So here, as you know, having been to the site, we're looking at really, you know, zero-to-six-inch flows, and we can address that and hold them in. The main goal, in addition to allowing the flows, is to not cause a rise on any insurable structure. And we also will follow all the critical facilities codes, as well as the schools. I can elaborate more of this.
It's helpful. Is that what you needed?
One more thing is that when we did this, when we were first asked to do this, staff had asked that we keep our redesign simple, so that there's not a lot of additional review on the part of staff time. We have not gone back and looked at the building since the call-up discussion with that in mind. We still have to take all of the concept comments and your comments into consideration. So there will be modifications as we proceed.
Okay, any questions? And then we can do open comment. Yep. Oh, we have lots. Okay. Mary, Lisa?
Thank you for that. I have a question. I believe it would be for Jane. So help me square several statements that you all made. I can't quite square them together in my mind. So the first statement that was made by Jane was that money that was spent that could have been used to raise the teacher pay. Okay? Another statement that was made was the generous donation that allowed for the building of a separate school building. And then the third one was made early, early on in this process, when you all were very concerned about creating housing for your teachers. So given, you know, so one of the questions that these three statements raise in my mind is, okay, if one of the goals was to create housing for your teachers, then couldn't the generous donation have been used to do that? That's one question. The money that could have been used to raise teacher pay, I believe that was made in reference to the money that was spent to look into more affordable housing. That was a one-time expense, which would not have been sustainable in raising teacher pay. So help me square those statements, please.
I might need you to help me clarify.
Okay.
Because you threw three questions at me. So we had a community member who really wanted to have the high school in a separate place and retain playground space for the lower school. And when a very generous member of the community comes and says that they will purchase the piece of land so as we could hold on to the school, our primary objective through this whole process is to have a new school. Right? It was not to have housing for teachers. So nothing will happen for us without a new school. So that's really the first piece, I think, to answer your question. I think my reference to the money we spent, being able to be directed towards faculty increases, is really trying to share with you that we really took what you asked us seriously. We really stopped our process for six months. We didn't put any more resources into the design of the campus, preparing for site review. We really put a pause because you came to us you know, talking about our teachers. But the gap between the amount of money offered to us and what we believe the land is worth, as well as the process and time and energy to do a complete rezoning and land map use change, right? We're in this place like we don't see how we can make that happen with our primary objective being letting go of land to build a new school. Right? It's a multi-multi-million-dollar project, and we don't have the fundraising capacity to raise $10 to $15 million. So any gap of a million, half a million dollars, is actually a no-go for us in many ways. Does that help?
Yeah, that --
Answer your questions? Was there another question I've gotten?
I have one more follow-up question. I think you answered my questions.
Your three.
And I have a follow-up question. Can you share with us what you believe that parcel is worth?
We believe it's worth at least $4 million. It's a 45,000-square-foot parcel.
So that's about one acre.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Erin.
All right. I think this is a question for Adrian. And let me say to all of you, thanks for working so hard on the affordable housing concept. It's a shame it's not working out, but it does seem like you really did everything you could to figure out whether it could, so I appreciate that effort that you spent. I just wanted to ask a little bit about the open space. Not so much about the calculation, but just thinking about future residents there and usable open space for those future residents. So do you mind popping back a few slides? And say how you're envisioning, let's say those are apartments or maybe they're townhouses, how you're envisioning that they would -- because I don't think they'd have a lot of green space on that one parcel. How would they be able to use the -- there'd be a bigger green space right next to them, well, some green space right next to them and a whole bunch over by the school, but it's a little further away. Tell me what you're thinking about there.
So I can tell you, this is just a study. We aren't trying to say that this is a final plan in any way. We did an analysis of how much land or how much square footage a building would take up, roughly speaking, and we established a footprint. We also said that we could probably retain on the southern portion, south of Locust, a certain amount of open space that could be used as a community garden, would act as a floodway, and would also act as a place for detention and water quality for the single-family sites. So that would be potentially shared with the users on the northern -- north of Locust. Also, that during off-school hours, the high school play area would be available to everyone. And there are multiple ways to handle parking, whether we need that much parking. We're showing parking in that middle zone there as being sufficient for one space per resident of the multifamily building, plus the amount of parking we would need for the high school, which during off-hours could be used as guest parking for the multifamily structure. So there were a lot of things we were juggling. We did not try to design the open space. Also, we know that the open space on the school would provide a certain amount of amenity for everybody in this community on off-school hours. It's not our intention to fence it. So --
Can I just stop here there? Because I remember earlier, one of the intentions was to make the school a little more defensible.
Yes, and I think this is something we go back and forth on a little bit. We know that we have to fence in a certain amount of kindergarten space to protect the kids from everything, state requirements for that. Now, I'm going to let Jane speak to this, because we're still working through this. But one thing we do know, though, is that during non-school hours, the whole campus is open and would likely continue to be so, and we would agree to that through this process and site review.
Can I speak to that?
That'd be great.
Yeah, so we've been very intentional that we've been very -- we've had an open campus for 35 years, and we have no intention of fencing off and closing off our campus. We really feel part of the North Boulder neighborhood. We feel connected to our neighbors. And as you see in these designs, our real intention was to have very secure buildings, buildings that I could hit a button and the entire campus could lock down versus right now, we have 15 different standalone buildings. So the design of this campus was really to protect the interior of the campus during the school day, these exterior classrooms, there wouldn't be doors, you wouldn't be able to come in. So to keep that feel of it and really just wanting to have no access onto that land during the school day, but to continue to be part of the seamless part of the neighborhood on non-school hours.
Great. So there'd be a policy that people wouldn't be allowed on the grounds during school hours, but not a fence, and your defensibility would be on the buildings rather than the campuses?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Lisa, and then Sam.
So I have some questions on the affordable housing and calculations, so I might ask Kurt or you guys. And my first question is to you, to the applicant, about on this northeast parcel that's about 45,000 square feet, and your open space calculations and your calculations for number of units that you could get on there. It's all dependent on this parcel being treated as one parcel. Is that correct? I just want to make this clear.
This is really a question that is for the city attorney, but we believe that's the case. We've discussed this with David Gere two years ago. If you look at how other projects have been done in the city, particularly Spark, which we're very familiar with, we've gone the opposite route. We've accumulated multiple parcels, we put in new streets, and we had open space on either side of those streets on various parcels. Here, we're doing the opposite. All the parcels are under the same ownership. There's an existing street between them, but the same logic applies, which is that open space, as long as you're all in the same zone, contributes towards the density of housing within this same general ownership parcel. We are not intending to subdivide, per se, but even then, in Spark, we did subdivide, and we're still able to do that. So if we have a buyer for that land, we're certainly going to look to incorporate all of that as a part of a site review. But if we don't have a buyer, the intention remains the same, which is that that land will go to housing at some point. When the buyer has a plan for that, we've got a recognition that that open space can contribute to that density of housing. And then they can come back and do a site review amendment to the specifics of that application.
But you have no intention of selling that parcel off as a separate parcel?
Well, at some point, we expect that will happen.
At some point, but I mean, once you get through your site review, maybe.
Well, actually, no. If we have a buyer ahead of that time, we'll look to possibly incorporating that into the site review application. If we don't, we still need to do it.
Right, but you're not going to be looking for a subdivision? I guess that's the question. Subdividing that off?
I think that's not known.
I mean, I'm trying to get through the number of units, and then my next question has to do with affordability of this. And you guys are saying, or your studies have indicated that, at least to you, that the cost of the affordable housing and from Mr. Durham at Boulder Housing Partners, that it does not seem feasible for an affordable housing provider to come forward without great subsidy and do affordable housing on that site.
I can only say that that's the conclusion that the affordable housing developers have come to.
Right.
And I think maybe Mr. Fernhoffer.
Right, and so that's who I'm going to ask next. So, Mr. Fernhoffer, could you please come forward so I could ask my questions? So generally, when the city helps subsidize an affordable housing project, what do we contribute on a per-unit basis about?
So our approach is to provide the gap on what they can get financed and what it costs to build the development. Since I've been here the last almost three years, it's ranged from about $55,000 to $100,000. We've been averaging probably around 85. When we looked at this project a couple of times with BHP, the funding was probably in the $130,000-per-unit range. And that was with certain assumptions that we were not totally confident in either. It's still not totally clear that we can get 40 units on that parcel. They would be small units, and usually as designs occur, you often lose units. There's also a process that you go through in the city, and I think BHP and others were -- I'm not totally confident that the neighborhood may support 40 or how that would all come out. So investing $4 million in a property with a lot of questions and uncertainty around the density and the number of units was concerning. And I think that's why Jeremy also mentioned opportunity cost with other affordable housing projects that they're working on, sort of weighing, you know, which project do you put your effort and your resources into?
Right, right. And they would, somebody would probably want to go and get some assistance, some help from the state or from the federal government if they were going to build that.
That's correct, yes.
And that would take a little bit of time, but then my understanding in those processes that they usually come in with a certain minimum number of units so that, because some of these are very competitive.
That's correct. And 40 units is, so from one perspective, they weren't sure that they would get 40. From the other perspective, 40 is sort of the minimum. 50 is an ideal size project from a tax credit perspective. 40 becomes more expensive and not as competitive.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I'll call myself here. So a couple of quick questions. These aren't for you, so it's the applicant. Thank you. So Jane, if you want to come back up, I just want to talk about a couple of quick thoughts. The reason that is given for not wanting to be able to, you can't work with the proposed affordable housing projects, is largely because you think you'll be able to get more money for the land if you sell it for market, correct?
It's a yes and. It's also the need to do the rezoning change and the land map use change to get the density needed by the affordable housing developers.
So yes, maybe and, because it could be that we could make 40 work if the land price were somewhat cheaper. Like, it seemed like at $2.5 million, maybe 40 would work, and at $4 million for the land, it wouldn't work. And I don't want to try and be an appraiser, but what I would ask is, if you're not going to be able to get as much for the land as you think you are, in other words, if you go out to the market to sell and the market tells you, nope, not even entitled for 18 townhouses, will it work for us to do this? Would you be able then to come back and work with Boulder Housing Partners? Because if it's of an indifference to you, who pays you the $2.5 or $3 million, it would certainly not have indifference to us, which one it turns out to be. And so I would just ask, what will you do if you don't get $4 million for that land?
Right. So I think I can't speak for the board. The board of trustees makes decisions like that. But that being said, part of our process through this was to put it out on the open market and see what we would get. So yes, I mean, we put it out there, we see what comes back to us. And, you know, we've had a great working relationship with Jeremy and Boulder Housing Partners, so I think we would be very open to that.
Okay. So when in this timeline do you intend to put this on the market?
It's on the market now, essentially. Right? I mean, that's, yeah.
And do you have offers, indicative pricing offers, that are near what you, the $4 million you think you're going to get?
We're in early conversations with someone for that, yeah, that I can't really reveal.
I'm not asking you to reveal anything.
Yeah, but yeah, yeah.
If it's a matter of financial indifference to you, which way it goes, it's not to us. And so we would just ask, it would be great if you're going to end up short of your goal. That may be what is making the subsidy need to be so high. I think the other thing that you're right is the number of units, but I don't think we've ever had much of a problem talking about having median density at that location if it went for affordable housing. So the other thing is, I understand that you don't want to put yourself through that delay, but if it were going to be affordable housing anyway, then perhaps there would be a way to sever that off and have it go through its own site plan review so that the affordable housing component wouldn't delay your school project, which is what you're interested in getting to.
Exactly.
So I'll just put out there that there's very high interest in this for affordable housing, if possible. It was something that was brought up by you at first, in fact, and it got us very excited seeing those site plans against housing on transit. And so if it turns out that it's going to be close, that we might be able to make it work, I think there's ways we could work with you to get that out of your site plan so that it went through its own site plan review, if you could make a sale.
Yeah, I'd love you to help me with this, Adrian, but yes, thank you.
Well, it's not actually indifferent to us. We'd be happy to see affordable housing here. That's what we've always said. The challenge is twofold. One is, if we don't get the money that's needed, we don't get to build all the school, and that's the bottom line. It's not like, well, if we don't get it, well, we can just do it for $2.5 million instead of $4. We just build a million and a half less worth of the school. That's what the issue really is for the school.
Right.
Number two, the process to go through an affordable housing project on this site means that it potentially slows down the ability of the school to build what it's trying to do, and that's something that scares us. It's already slowed us down six months. So that's the other component that we're very concerned about.
So I heard both of those. I was trying to come up with a way that it could not slow you down if you're only going to get $2.5 or $2.75 for it.
It would slow us down if we didn't get $4 million, because we couldn't build it.
Okay, well, then, good luck with that. But, you know, there could come a scenario where you don't and you fundraise for the gap, and if that's where you end up at, it would be great to have you bring it.
And we appreciate that. And we have talked about this, and if we don't get that money, then we know we're building less school. That's our concern.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question, Adrian, before you sit down, just a follow-up question. Jane said that it was a land use map change and zoning change. So it's LR, and I was under the impression that it would go to RL2, which would not --
It is RL2. LR is the land use, RL is the zoning.
But it would be, yes, I recognize it, how that works. The RL2 is the zoning change that would be designed.
No, it's already RL2.
It's already RL2?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one more clarification.
So I just want to state this one more time. So if this parcel, this northeast parcel, was cleaved off and put under a separate site review, then that northeast parcel would lose the advantage of the open space. And so that parcel would have to go, if it was going to stay at RL2, it would have to go through a different process, and it would require a different amount of open space, and you would lose the number of units. Is that correct?
The answer is, I don't know. That's a question for the city attorney's office, because our understanding is, we could always come back and revise the site review application in future if a buyer wants to do that, but I'd rather the city attorney and land use.
No, Adrian's correct. You know, the site review boundary gets drawn based on what's included in the application, so you get the benefit of aggravating all the aggravating, aggregating all of the open space within the boundary of the site review.
Right.
If they did want to come back and carve the parcel off, they would need to demonstrate that they still have enough open space to serve the new piece that's being carved off and redeveloping, and that they're not making the existing site review non-conforming. So they would need to demonstrate that they're compliant in both parts.
Okay. Thank you.
Charles, I think your frustration is showing.
Okay. We're going to go to the public hearing.
We have one person, Karen George.
Okay. Would, you want to come up?
I live at 1120 Union Avenue, so I'm directly across from the development on the south side. And, you know, I've lived in Boulder since 1979 and moved to Union Avenue after renting for many years because I couldn't afford to buy anything until then. And I completely remodeled in 2003 after looking at the Boulder -- And I completely remodeled in 2003 after looking at the Boulder sub-community plan and paid particular attention to the traffic because it's pretty close to Broadway. And I want to address traffic and vehicles this evening. And I'd like to start with thanking the folks at Waldorf for withdrawing the plan for an 11th Street, which would have directed traffic right into my front yard. So I'm very happy about that. And I also wanted to note that I and some of my neighbors, some of whom are at the Wonderland Lake discussion tonight, have some concerns about traffic and vehicles. You know, more people in the neighborhood is not a problem. More vehicles tends to be because of traffic and parking. And I would like to address both parking. That's during, parking during the construction phase, for one, because that's going to be awful. And also a need for greater safety on Union Avenue when we put in a bike path between Locust and have more residents, more fences, because we have a lot of cyclists, dog walkers, pets, wild deer, wildlife, skateboarders coming down the hill from Union Avenue to Broadway and speeding. And it's going to be a real problem. And I would hope that you folks would, as part of this development, consider putting in speed bumps like they have on Utica, on Union, and making sure that there is adequate parking also, particularly during the construction phase. And I'm just experiencing a small remodel right next door to me. And I've had my driveway blocked off because they wanted to put the gutters together in front of my driveway for some reason. And people taking my trash and recycling off the curb so they could park, so the workers could go there. And I think it's really important to take care of the neighborhood and make sure that there's adequate parking for people when there's construction going on. So that's that.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
You have one more person, Brian Buckley.
Okay. And then after that, we'll go ahead and close.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for the whole process since February and thanks for being so open to work with us. I just want to say, I was a public school teacher for 20 years. Some of the schools I taught in had redevelopment projects, went to school boards. Our Waldorf School, our beloved Shining Mountain, is a small community. It's 35 years old. We rely on our community to give each year in the annual fund. We're going to rely on our community for fundraising. We will never have the option to go to the largesse of the state for a bond or anything to help us with the money we need to do this, to keep our little nursery alive in North Boulder. And the land is kind of our bond, that we have our chance to do all the wonderful things we want to do to stay in the city confines with bus and bike options for all the kids as well. So thank you very much.
I'm sorry, you have one more. Michael Strife.
Thank you. It's my first time speaking in front of you all, so I didn't understand the system. So I appreciate you taking my time. Let's see, I just moved to 712 Locust, and I love the neighborhood. I think the Shining Mountain project's a great idea, and I'm looking forward to seeing the changes. My concern comes with extending Locust to Broadway.
Can we put that back up?
Thank you for putting that map back up.
But you can.
Anyway, when Locust gets extended to Broadway, it creates a direct route to Community Foothills Park. The actual parking lot for Community Foothills Park is on Cherry Street, so in order to get to that, you have to jog around to get to the Community Foothills Park parking lot. And this would create a direct route to the south side of Community Foothills Park. And I didn't realize this when I moved there, but like every day after school, soccer practice occurs, and there's just a ton of traffic on Locust, but not a lot of parking to support it. So creating this direct access route to the park would, I don't know, make more cars go in that direction. So I just wanted you to consider that as a question to ask developers and in concept review. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Did you want to respond to that?
Happy to. Just want to note that we're proposing a right-in, right-out on Locust. So the only people who would use Locust instead of Violet to get there would be those people coming from the south, and they wouldn't be able to do that if we use a right-in, right-out only on Locust. If they're coming from the north, they'd use Violet as they do today.
Okay, so that would largely address that.
I have a dumb question of staff.
We have a dumb question. Okay.
Are we, I'm sorry, close?
Yeah, okay. So we're closing the public hearing. Thank you all. We have a question for staff.
Yeah, just quickly, it looks like, I'm just looking at the site here, and it looks like the area where the high school will go and the housing in whatever configuration is four lots currently. So will that just be merged and subdivided?
We'd likely have them do a lot line elimination as part of the site review process.
Okay, so that's how that happens. Thank you.
Okay, this is the part where we give our input. Who would like to go first? Bob.
I think this is a great project. It's a great organization. It's provided wonderful services to our community for 35 years, and we're the beneficiary of that with Mirabai. And it looks like you've got flood addressed, and it's regrettable that we were not able to find an affordable housing solution there. We really, really appreciate all the time and money you spent on trying to do that. I know you talked to everybody in town you could find. I actually happen to be the council liaison to Boulder Housing Partners, and I nudged it from both directions. Adrian knows that. And I know that Boulder Housing Partners really worked hard to try to make this work. The numbers just don't work here, unfortunately. And the good news is we're doing great things in affordable housing in other parts of the community, and this will keep our powder dry for other great things. But this parcel, unfortunately, is just not going to work just economically. So thank you for humoring us, and you did more than humor us. You worked really, really hard to try to make that work. Because I know from a mission standpoint, affordable housing was something you really very much wanted to do on the location. So thanks for trying. Thanks for being patient with us. I think it's a great project. I don't have any concept or design comments to add, but thank you for working very hard, and I look forward to seeing this on-site review if we end up calling it up.
Mirabai.
So, yeah, I'll just chime in with Bob and want to thank you guys so much for the effort you put in. It's incredible. Yes, I was the wonderful beneficiary of attending school there for 10 years, and it was one of the best experiences I could have. And so it's very near and dear to my heart, and so I'm very excited to see this plan move forward and hopefully be able to touch many other children's lives. So, and I will say, just from one side, you know, I know you worked really hard for the affordable side, but from the neighborhood side, I think there's going to be a lot of neighbors that are happier with the new proposal coming forward because I received quite a few emails and phone calls with many neighbors worried about the density coming in. So kind of a silver lining for some people. And again, as Bob says, I think we have a lot of other projects going on in our town that will support affordable housing. So thank you guys so, so much, and really excited to see how it turns out.
Erin.
So I'll echo the complimentary words of my colleagues. I won't repeat them all, they're well said. Just as an old planning board member, I can't let it go by without a couple of detailed comments just to throw in. I'm really glad that you're able to have the additional space for the high school. And just, I know you will, but really think carefully about how that combined open space will work. Because it seems like the space for the high schoolers and space for residences of townhouses or apartments could be very complimentary. So just, it's an opportunity to design something that works for everybody, as well as that detention pond and would, as functional open space to. And then the parking as well, if you can share that parking. There's such complementary uses between people, folks who are coming home at night and people who are parking during the day for the high school. So that seems like a real opportunity. And then just that with the Locust extension, the right-in, right-out sounds great because I don't think you want that to be the main connection to the park. We are losing a great multi-use path there, so I've said this on a previous time, but just to make sure to keep that as a strong bike pad connection with, maybe it's a little bit of a wider sidewalk than usual, so that people can get through there very easily. But really excited about the project, really appreciate your role in the community, and looking forward to this. I live not too far away, look forward to the eventual transformation of the site.
Lisa.
I'll speak to this because I walk by it probably four times a week. And it's a beautiful school, it has a beautiful campus. And I really do appreciate what you guys have done in terms of trying to identify affordable housing. I feel like, given the numbers and the situation, I understand where you guys are coming from in terms of what your priorities are. It would be nice to see affordable housing on this site, but I also am pretty convinced that our putting $130,000 per unit is, we can do better with that money and we can get more units elsewhere. I still would like to see an urban, and it looks like you're doing an urban form there. And I still would like you to see what you can do, but I don't know how it's going to become cheaper. I do wonder this gap of 1.5 million between the 2.5 and the 4. But I, this is a concept plan, and I just, I think it's very good. I am a little sorry to see Locust go all the way through because it is a lovely bike path, but, or pedestrian path. But I can see the reason why, and so that's absolutely necessary. But because it has been used so long as a pedestrian connection and bike, I would echo what Erin said in terms of doing some kind of notification, painting on the street, I don't know, but making sure that people know that bikes and their students and a lot of your students come on bikes. One thing I was a little disappointed to see, and I don't know what you're going to do, but you have these really whimsical gates in that surround this incredible student garden. And I'll see the students out there sometimes. Right now, they're not. But it's a beautiful amenity for the neighborhood, and I would hope that that is retained and not cut off by parking. And I am encouraged to see you reducing your parking so that you're complementing. But I also want to recognize the woman who spoke earlier, and I think her concerns are real. And I would ask that some kind of signage or something be put up that is maintained up for the construction workers. I mean, usually people are just coming to work, they're not thinking, they're just getting to their jobs. So they're not, it's not malfeasance, but I think they need to be reminded. And I don't know in this plan where you would plan for additional street parking or something like that. Generally, those streets are not overfull with parking. And so, anyway, I wish you well and see what you come back with. So good luck. And also thank you for allowing the public to come onto your open space.
Sam.
Yeah, so this is a beautiful project, notwithstanding the things that we've been hoping to get, but we might not get. It is, I actually really appreciate the reconfiguration of where the high school's going to go. I think that's going to work a lot better, and it's going to keep everything concentrated and kind of narrowly focused. And so I agree with Erin's comments. I mean, I really do think that one key component for making the lives of the people who are going to live on that front lot as good as they can be is going to be how the open space works for them. So that'll be great. I mean, I appreciate the open space that's there now when I go up on the weekends to visit. So a similar thing down here will be very good, and I agree with the Locust Street comments. I want to express a preference for the townhomes versus the other one. Now, one of the reasons for that is aesthetic. It looks to me like the layout of the parking and the building itself for the higher unit count, which I generally before, is going to be clunkier. And so depending on how you get through site plan review and, you know, continue studying both of the options, it may well turn out that the townhomes are, you know, a better fit. You know, they're a median density kind of transition from the single-family dwellings over to Broadway, which we do want more density on just because the transit's there. So anyway, that's just a random comment. I think generally this will be good for you and good for the community. And if it does come to pass, that you don't get as much for that land as you thought you were going to get, it would be fantastic if you just do one more pass with the housing folks. So thanks very much.
All right.
So I'll echo what my colleagues have said. Thank you, and I'll thank you again for your willingness to continue to look at the possibility of affordable housing. And as I'm with Sam, if things don't work out, please, 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 come back and see what we might be able to work out. And I also have a preference for the townhomes. And thank you once again for willing to work with us, and I look forward to taking strolls through the new campus as well.
Cindy.
I just wanted to thank you and say it's a great project. Thank you for your patience, and I hope you get that price. Put it into the school. Thank you.
Well, just since Sam brought up the types of units, please do continue exploring the apartments because you figure with the larger number and the smaller units, the smaller size, that they would be at a more affordable price point, which is, I think, a type of housing our community could use. So please do keep both in the mix.
Erin, do you mean townhouses or the stacked flats?
Stacked flats.
Okay.
Yeah, both the townhouses and the stacked flats are worth exploring because they both offer different pros and cons.
Right. And I'll just, anybody say, I can't approve on what's been said. So, yeah, thank you for working through this, and I think we're all going to be really happy with where we end up. Okay, thank you all.
Okay, your second public hearing is the third reading of ordinance 8296 regarding business community zoning districts. Thank you. You're staying.
I'm just letting Carl in and Shannon out.
Okay.
They have to Brexit, they have to exit.
I can't get the cursor back, it's up there. That's weird. You get it? There you go.
Oh, reading the New York Times over there.
Back up on the screen. It's counterintuitive where you have to get it off there.
Oh, yay, here we go. Charles Farrell and Carl Guyler will present this matter.
Great, and Carl Guyler will present staff's analysis tonight. Good evening, council members. Tonight, we're talking about ordinance 8296. This will be consideration of ordinance, the third reading of the ordinance. It's a continuation from the council discussion that commenced following a public hearing on December 18th. So before the council tonight is potential action on the ordinance, which has been updated to respond to council comments on the prior ordinance, as well as getting additional directions if necessary on any of more substantial changes to the B.C. zones that we could talk about at the January 18th retreat. So being that we went through the background at the previous December 18th meeting, I'm going to jump through this. Obviously, the concern has been the development predominantly of residential, which is a buy-rite use currently in the B.C. zones, and trying to incentivize more neighborhood-serving type uses in these zones. So that's why we're bringing this ordinance forward. So there's been a number of iterations before the council, and there's been two recommendations from planning board on this particular topic. So I'm just going to So, I'm just going to jump through this. So, I'm bringing us back to this slide that we looked at on December 18th, the potential options. So, we had talked about potentially passing the prior ordinance, which did not occur. What council had shown interest in is basically focusing on the area that's shown in green, looking at specific directed changes to the ordinance, potentially looking at other conditional uses in the ordinance that could be done rather quickly and brought back to this particular meeting. The ones in blue are those more substantive items that we would need to discuss further and plug into our work program plan. So, getting into the council direction from December 18th, the first was to exempt any projects that had a complete technical document, applications submitted to the city by the time of the first reading of the ordinance, so that would be October 16th. So, that has been incorporated into the ordinance. Another request was to apply any of the new B.C. provisions to specific neighborhood centers. So, that would be the Basemar baseline zero area, the Table Mesa Shopping Center, 55th and Arapahoe area, the Ideal Market and Community Plaza area north of downtown, the Meadows Shopping Center, and Diagonal Plaza.
Can I interrupt you briefly? I'm sorry.
Just a question. When you say including Alpine-Balsam, I'm a little confused by that. I also caught it in the memo. You don't mean requiring first-floor retail in the Alpine-Balsam project, do you?
It would apply to that area unless a use review were approved.
Okay, because I'm, I mean, I'm pretty sure we were talking about Ideal Market and Community Plaza, but I really didn't recall council having a sense. So, we can return to that during discussion, but just wanted to ask.
So, the third request was to prohibit lodging uses in the B.C. zones, as well as considering some other uses for the more restrictive use category for conditional uses. So, there were certain uses that were talked about that were considered allowed that we've converted to conditional uses. Another request was to cap some of the non-retail, non-residential uses by percentage, and only allow expansion above a specified percentage with a use review approval. And then lastly, it would be addressing parking as a principal use, which I'll talk about further. So, first off, what we've done is we've added a new appendix N that's attached to the ordinance that would specify the specific areas that we talked about. And this can still be, you know, modified in another iteration, but includes the places that I had spoke of before. It would add non-neighborhood-serving uses as conditional uses. They'd be subject to the criteria that we discussed. By doing that, it creates a new section in our use standards that we're calling specific use standards for business community areas designated in appendix N. So, areas outside of these mapped areas would not be subject to these restrictions. They'd be, continue to be buy right uses. So, the criteria that's proposed in the ordinance is to allow the use above the ground floor, only allowing the ground level access that we've discussed before. It includes a 10% cap on the specified uses. So, this includes all of the uses that are in this category would be combined for a total of 10%. We've also added park and rides as a principal use as an allowed use, and if it were not to be used as a park and ride, it would be a use review use. If they were not to meet these particular criteria, then an applicant could request a use review to get approval, and it would be subject to that criterion that we discussed in previous iterations of the ordinance related to the specific context of those areas and the retail nature of the B.C. zones. So, again, these are the uses that would be subject to this. The ones in yellow are the ones that we've added that were previously allowed uses. So, government facilities, municipal facilities, museums, business support services, and adult education were uses that were added as conditional uses that were previously allowed, just allowed Lodging uses, including hotels, motels, and hostels, are now prohibited in the current iteration of the ordinance. If they exist in these zones, they would be considered non-conforming uses if this is passed. So, again, all other uses would continue to be allowed per the current B.C. standards that we're not proposing to change. And then, again, retail restaurants and personal service type uses, which are neighborhood-serving uses, would be incentivized as allowed uses. So, another comment that came up at council at the previous meeting was to have more fine-grained detailed maps of these areas. So, we do have extra slides of these if we needed to discuss these, so I can certainly go to those during the conversation. So, that concludes the presentation. We're recommending approval of the ordinance that you have before you in attachment A, and happy to answer any questions.
I have one. You mentioned lodging becoming a non-conforming use. Do you have a sense, or do we know how many places that would be true today?
We have not done the analysis of the number of motels and hotels in the zones.
But just to follow up on that, the ones that might be in a 28th or 30th Street corridor B.C., those aren't captured by the--
They're not captured by this.
The 28th and 30th corridor remain with the use table that they have now.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so off the top of our heads, we don't actually, there really isn't lodging in any of these--
The Meadows, right? There's the, and it may not be actually in. I think the Meadows has a--
A residence in, yeah.
Yeah, residence in. That might be the only one.
Okay. Other questions? Bob.
Tom, I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's in here. Can you just kind of walk us through how this appendix N ties into the ordinance? Can you, can you walk us through? Because I didn't quite track how this got pulled in, or is that too complicated of a description? Can you just say--
Basically, you just, you look up the use--
Yeah.
And if it's subject, if it's a conditional use, you go to the, the specific use standards that refers you to appendix N, and you would just have to check if your particular parcel is in these mapped areas, you'd be subject to the conditional use standards. Otherwise, it's an allowed use.
Okay.
I think it's the same way we did the height limit.
That one, that one was easier to me to understand. This is really complicated. It's an entirely satisfactory answer to say, trust me, it's there.
Trust me, it's there.
I just tried to follow it, I couldn't.
Could I, could I just rephrase it to make sure that I understand the way it works? So, it's an allowed use anywhere but in, but those places in appendix N.
That's right.
Okay. And, and then Sam said something about if, for all other parcels, it's the existing use table? That kind of threw me off. I thought we were changing the use table and then adding appendix N to the new use table. And then when you said it's the old use table, that just derailed me. So, I--
It's all in the same category. It's just, like, for instance, if you're a hotel in the Crossroad Commons area, you'd refer to the use table, it'd be a C. You'd go to the section 9610. It refers you to appendix N. You look up, the property's not in the mapped area of appendix N, it's an allowed use. And the preamble of 9610 lists all the uses and says they're allowed unless you're in appendix N, then you're subject to the use criteria.
So, it's not the old use table, it's the new modified use table that considers all this?
Yes, that's what, you can think of it that way.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I was just referring to the parts on 28th Street and those small non-conforming--
Yeah.
That would have been made non-conforming if we didn't take this approach.
Yeah, I realize that, but when you said the old use table, it just threw me off.
Okay, all right.
Because there's the, the specific use standard column, right? Where he says, well, you have to go look at this, or that, or the other section of the code, and that then refers you to the language that says how they work, right?
Correct.
I don't have questions.
Can you, I apologize for not being able to find this. The point is to the specific language about the 10% maximum in the ordinance. Where exactly is that language?
Yeah, it's in 9610.
Do you have a packet page?
Do you have the packet? 297. Yeah, so it's not, it's a new section in the code, so it's not underlined, but in the ordinance, it starts with section 9610, and then it would be subsection A2, and that refers to the 10%.
Up at 298.
298, actually, okay. Yeah, thanks. It was the lack of underlining that was making it hard to find out. Thank you. I'm just going to read that through here.
Okay.
And so, to put that into layman's terms, if I can try and summarize it, this section basically says you can have any use that's not retail, but is also not residential, but the floor area of all those uses that are not either retail or residential is limited to 10% of the entire floor area?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so, we want retail and neighborhood-serving on the first floor, right? So, all first floors that. And then, of, of the total area, you can have 10% that's like small offices, masseuse offices, or acupuncturists, or whatever, but that can only be 10% of the entire floor area of the project. The rest would need to be residential. So, the idea is not to have Class A office space be 100% of everything that's not retail on the first floor.
Right, but where I was not tracking it was the first floor, and that, that first floor would be mostly retail or those types of uses. I know we did talk about allowing some affordable housing on the first floor, but I guess it's the 10% of non-residential that kind of tripped me up. So, so we're allowing mostly non-residential on the first floor.
That's right.
And then, on the second and third floor, we're encouraging residential. But in this mix, we're also encouraging some office in a small percent--
Allowing.
Allowing. So, I have that right?
I think so.
And if I can rephrase it a little, a little differently, that on the ground floor, it has to be the neighborhood-serving retail uses--
Unless--
--without a use review, right? But, and then, on the second and above floors, the neighborhood-serving retail uses are still allowed. Residential is still allowed without exemption, exception, but the other uses like offices and medical and things like that, that's limited to a 10% total.
That's correct. And I might suggest a small change to the language under subsection 4, where it talks about the use review requirement, because it talks about the use on the ground floor will not adversely affect the intended function and character. Since percentage is one of those things that could be different, we probably should specify that as well.
So, how would it read?
It would be like, shall demonstrate that the use on the ground floor or at a different percentage would still serve the character. I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Yep. And--
Was it along the same lines or different?
It's kind of on that, but why don't let them jump--
Okay, so, my question has to do with, Lisa brought up the, the idea that I had brought up, which was to allow affordable, if there were affordable housing on the ground floor, to allow it, because it was onsite, and some percentage of it could be affordable housing. So, you didn't include it here, and I guess what I took it to mean that it was a difficult thing to include by way of a use table, and that perhaps, and my, so my question is, were you thinking that it might be part of another project, like, say, for example, the community benefit project?
We were thinking that it could be incorporated in another iteration of the B.C. zones. We were anticipating certain changes that would be a little more substantive, and we could analyze what would make the most sense related to the permanently affordable housing required, and incorporate that in a, in a latter change.
So, if I could jump in as a colleague, I think what staff has done here is super clever, because it, you know, does that rezoning in a way that we were talking about? Because the actual rezoning process, a criteria-based creation of new zone districts would take a lot more time and be a lot more difficult. And so, we had talked about that project coming later. The fact that we're getting very close here means that I think when we do that, whenever that is, it's part of the work plan for the comp plan, right? It is the rezoning potentially of the B.C. zones. We could incorporate it then. If we're doing a rezoning, then that would be another project that that might fit into.
Well, I guess, I guess, I'll wait till after the public hearing.
There is no public hearing.
Oh, there is no public hearing.
But--
Oh, that's right. Okay, well, then I guess I'll just make my comment now.
Well, wait, hold your comment till--
Okay.
Are we done with, we have Lisa, and did you have your hand up? No, Lisa.
So, just refresh my memory, and we had talked about this at our last discussion, and it could be, it's the Goose Creek Little Shopping Center, that most of that is medical use, and it's a very tiny, two acres or something like that. Did we just take them out, or what did we do with--
Yeah, that particular area of B.C. is not in appendix N, so that just continues to be governed as it is today.
That's what I thought, but I just--
We didn't address corridors.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't get caught up.
All those, all those things that we were warned we would make non-conforming if we did it a couple of versions ago, were, staff has like completely solved all--
No, I know, and, and so, and I really appreciate it. So, I just want to make sure that--
Okay, any other questions? Mary, start off with--
Okay, do my comment now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I was just going to comment that to include the affordable housing allowance in the best project that comes the soonest. So, that's my comment. But in general, I just want to say that this was really, really good work, and really impressive and creative, and I really appreciated the thought that you all put into it, and it's, I think, the iterative process was well worth it. I think this is a good outcome. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would, so--
Then we'll all speak to it.
I will. So, I move that we adopt ordinance 8296, amending Title IX Land Use Code, BRC 1981, to preserve commercial retail uses in the Business Community 1 (B.C. 1) and Business Community 2 (B.C. 2) zoning districts by restricting residential and other ground floor uses and setting forth related details.
Second.
Do you want to add the amendment that Carl offered?
With, as amended by the suggestion of Carl Guyler.
Second.
Right, okay, so--
May I make a suggestion? If you do that, then you have to bring it back. Do you want to bring it back? Or, we could just do that in the next supplement, since you've all agreed to it, and you could pass this ordinance final tonight, since it's such a minor change? I can just put it on the list for the supplement, which you adopt quarterly?
That's totally fine.
Yeah.
Let's get it done tonight.
Yeah, great. You want to speak to--
Oh, sure. I mean, I agree completely with Mary. This was really, really, really good, creative staff work. It essentially achieved what we were looking to do, which is to take the different typologies and separate them and get the uses, you know, aligned with the typologies. We will have to come back later probably for both the affordable housing piece, however we want to incentivize that, and we will have to come back for any real rezoning that we do, subject to the comp plan, work plan. But I think it gets us really where we want to go, and I hope, you know, it means that we can bring this zone district out of the moratorium, and this will be the first piece. And the reason we have the opportunity zone to start with is Diagonal Plaza, and so, getting it out of the moratorium and getting the rules right for it might help a lot.
So, I also wanted to say I'm, I'm really happy to see how this has evolved, and thinks that it really will suit the purpose for which it was brought forward in the first place, to try and preserve those uses that actually help neighborhoods be neighborhoods and keep people out of their cars to such a degree. So, thank you for the, for the good work. So thank you for the, for the good work. Erin.
You know, I'll agree with what's been said, and just comment, I really appreciate how we've narrowed the focus to the neighborhood retail centers, because I was concerned in the previous version about losing opportunities for housing in the central part of the city in the 28th, 30th Street, Pearl Street corridors. So I really appreciate this new approach that we've taken, where we're singling out these areas that we want to function as neighborhood retail centers. And I'll just speak a little bit to the legislative intent, because I think it can maybe help if use reviews are submitted. I think the idea here is that these neighborhood shopping centers function as just that, places where you can get your retail needs met within a short distance from your home, but that in terms of if a use review comes up, we do also want to encourage housing in the right places in our city. So we want to predominantly have these be retail areas, and people disagree with me if you, if you would like, but for, say, a larger parcel, like if Meadows redeveloped all at once, or if a Diagonal Plaza comes forward, well, we don't need retail necessarily in every internal street of a major development, and you want retail in a large enough amount to serve the needs of the community and make for walkable streetscape and things like that, but you could build an integrated, larger project potentially that didn't have retail in every street front. So if people see a use review for a larger project, I'd kind of communicate that intention, and feel free, feel free to throw in other thoughts.
I'd like to colloquy on that, because I totally agree, and one of my thoughts, looking ahead to maybe a future rezoning, would be that we look based on size of the parcel, because if it's gonna have internal streets in a rezone, we may want to look at it differently than if it's not, so.
I agree. I have a mirror by, then Lisa.
So again, I just want to thank Steph for being so fluid on this and really helping us, I think, get the intention of what was brought forward originally. I think it's really important to remember what our retail provides this community, and how much of it I think we've really lost in the last couple years, and some of these services that you can't buy online anymore, you can't run and get your shoes repaired, and you can't run and get a back rub or massage, whatever. And online, and so these type of services that we're hopefully protecting here is a great value to our community, and in my opinion at least, and I think that the golden idea of these 15-minute neighborhoods, I'm hoping that this helps preserve that idea so that we can decrease our use of cars, and I agree with what Erin and Sam have said, if we can look at the size of new developments and see how it integrates with the community. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Lisa? So I will agree with what everybody has said. I'm just so thankful for your creativity and brilliance as staff, and I think you do just a fantastic job. I'm excited, because actually, we're, we've been talking about 15-minute neighborhoods for a long time, yet we've kind of not gotten them, and I really see a direct path to achieving those. I think it will be very important, the typologies that we establish for the different sizes of these, these shopping centers now, and I totally agree with Erin and Sam, there's some that I think require internal streets, and I would hope, and we didn't, I didn't ask when those typologies are scheduled, but I'm sure they will be, but I would hope that we would really emphasize a urban form, so that we encourage as much on-street parking as possible, and encourage parking in the back of buildings instead of in the front of buildings to occur except on the street. And I, I think we were able, well, it wasn't included in this, but we were able to achieve that in the Holiday in North Boulder Village, and that's, that place is so vibrant, as Erin lives up there, people walk all over the place. I have an opportunity, I have a 15-minute shopping center in my neighborhood. It has, it's 15 minutes away from me, and it is, it hosts 18 different local retail and shops and businesses. It had asked previously to being developed as a PUD to include housing, but it's a very successful shopping center today, and it's a place that really brings the community together, and you have a lot of people. So I think this, this is a, really a very good step forward to enriching our community with neighborhood shops and with opportunities for people to come across each other and just strengthen those relationships. Bob?
I'll be supporting this too, and I think this, I think this process really shows that if we take the time and we're thoughtful and we kick things around and let staff do all the hard work for us, we'll eventually get it right, and I, and I think this is a good, a good example of that. It took us six minutes, six months to get here, but, but I think through this process, and with a fair amount of community engagement as well, and the fact that we don't have people here tonight, the fact that we're not receiving emails in opposition to this particular ordinance tells me that I think we've landed at a good place. It took us a little, we traveled a winding path to get here, but I think we did a good job, staff did a good job, I should say, and, and we're gonna support them, it sounds like, tonight. So let's, let's think about using this as a model next time we have a similar circumstance to work it through and take the time we need. I do have a question, I guess first for Tom, and then maybe for council. Tom, so if we pass this ordinance, the two parcels that are B.C. 1, B.C. 2, that are in the opportunity zone, which is the northwest corner of 55th and Rappahoe, and then, of course, Diagonal Crossing would be eligible to be removed from the moratorium, is that correct?
Yes.
Would we have to pass a new ordinance or an amendment to 8312 to take those out of the moratorium?
Yeah.
So I guess the question for councils, would you all entertain such a motion maybe at our next meeting?
I thought we built it into the ordinance that that would be the understanding that we actually have to pass a separate ordinance every time?
I think you do. I'll look at that and bring it to the AC on Monday morning and tell you what I think.
My inclination would be, whatever it takes, we should schedule it for the next meeting, because this is exactly what we said that we were going to do, and, you know, I'd like to keep faith with the community about that and show that we're moving quickly.
Well, let us build it in then to the next time we do something where it's part of the ordinance that this removes it, so we don't have to be doing separate things.
I just, I'm a little concerned, because that would leave it up to staff to decide whether or not, I, I feel...
No, no, I meant, we write an ordinance, we can do it at the same time.
Oh, I think she's saying, put it in this ordinance, and thereby bypass it.
We will keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the only...
It would help if council identified that for us, which ordinance you're thinking will take something out.
Right, we wrote that that was our intent, I guess we just didn't make the mechanism. I haven't spoken yet, did you want to...
Just on this topic?
Yeah, go ahead.
Bob, in addition to the ones you mentioned, there's the B.C. zones along 28th and 30th Streets, I think.
Sure, yeah. Thank you for that. Any B.C. 1, B.C. 2s, yes, whether they're these or anything that's in there, yeah, thank you for that clarification, yeah.
And I guess the only thing I would just add, in addition to what folks have already said about this, is that one of the great frustrations of being on council is when projects come to you and they're by right, well, they don't come to you if they're by right, but things happen, and we're like, oops, that's not what we wanted, but that's what the code said, and I guess I'm very pleased that we are trying to get ahead of that with this and preserve the things that we, we wanted in terms of 15-minute neighborhoods and retail nodes, and I think there's a bunch of our work plan in the coming year that is an attempt to get ahead of things in order to make sure that they then deliver what the community has said they want. So this is, I hope, the start of many subsequent things. So I'm very pleased that we're here, and we couldn't have done it without you guys. So, thanks. Okay.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Moorezal?
Aye.
Nagel?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yates?
Aye.
Young?
Yes.
Brockett?
Aye.
Harlisle?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously?
Aye.
Now it does. Now we cut that off.
Yep.
Okay, we're ahead of it.
Your next item is regarding your sub-community planning program.
Thanks, guys, great job.
That was only half our, 30, and we weren't, few fall behind.
And the reason why is, well, there's just so little to have to mess with.
Yeah, can you get there?
You're gonna kick it off?
I just didn't see that much controversy here, so.
So our interim planning director and assistant city manager, Chris Messchuk, will kick this one off. Chris?
Thanks, Jane, and good evening, council members. Chris Messchuk, interim director of planning, and with me is Kathleen King, a senior planner in our comprehensive planning division, so I'm just gonna kick things off as Kathleen pulls up the presentation, and we're really here tonight to continue to talk about the sub-community planning program. I think your mouse is hiding on the other screen.
I think it's...
Oh, you probably need a mouse that I'm holding on to.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay, so we were here last on September 25th, where we really talked about the foundations of sub-community planning, the history of sub-community planning in Boulder, best practices across the country related to this type of planning, and then we covered the first three of six foundational elements, so we're gonna cover tonight the last three of those foundational elements, and then Kathleen's gonna walk through the information that we have before you. So with that, I'll hand it over to Kathleen.
Hello, thank you for having me back tonight. I'm excited to be with you to speak about sub-community planning and move this project forward. We're gonna break tonight's discussion into two parts. I know everyone is anxious to discuss which sub-community should be taken on this year, but I'd like to start with finishing up our conversation on the remaining foundational elements and get your feedback and direction on those pieces first. So first, we'll talk about what we're planning for the scope, community engagement, and schedule of these kinds of plans, and then move into a discussion about boundaries and prioritization. When we last met in September, we identified six foundational elements of the sub-community planning program and discussed some definitions, thoughts on boundaries, and prioritization criteria. Tonight, we'll focus on the scope and deliverables of a sub-community plan, how community engagement will be integrated with that process, and what the timeline for a sub-community plan will look like. So the questions for the first half of our discussion are, does council find the six phases of the scope of work appropriate, and does council agree with the proposed approach for community engagement? So we'll start with scope. Our team had a lot of great resources to piece together a scope of work for the sub-community planning program, the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan, and the post-plan process evaluation, some of the plans from the national case studies we looked at in September, other plans and ongoing planning efforts in the city, and then we also met with staff from many other city departments to find out how sub-community plans could support their work. What we found was that it's gonna be important for the future, for the future of the scope of work for sub-community plans to achieve three major goals. The scope of work should help implement the goals of the BVCP as well as the department master plans. The scope needs to include multiple opportunities for collaboration with neighborhoods across city departments and with boards and city council, and the scope should deliver high-quality products and be responsible to a predetermined schedule. We've put together a six-phased process to achieve those goals, and I'll walk you through each of these phases and their major deliverables. The first phase is the project kickoff. This phase will set up our internal team, identify our stakeholder groups and the methods that are most appropriate for engaging those groups, and will give us some basic understanding of the site. The deliverables will be a project charter that is used to define the goals of the project, roles and responsibilities of team members, decision-makers, and stakeholders, and set some clear expectations about communication, a community engagement plan, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit, some base maps to get us started, and a sub-community tour to get our team out on the ground to really be able to see, touch, hear, and experience the neighborhoods that make up a sub-community. The next phase is inventory and analysis. This phase is all about gathering information from our internal data, outside sources, but most importantly, from the residents, landowners, business owners, and other stakeholders whose quality of life can be impacted by these plans. This phase will deliver a previous plan's memo, which will help us understand what opportunities and constraints we'll be working with based on prior planning work, as well as an inventory and analysis report. The third phase of work is where we'll dive into some of the really fun stuff. We'll work with community members to identify areas or neighborhoods that are really quite stable but may need some minor improvements, areas that should be preserved or protected, and then areas where there might be room for evolution. I like to think of this as the big idea phase. We have a lot of room for creativity here, and we'll be sourcing ideas from the folks who live and work in the sub-community to identify the key goals and measurable objectives for the future. Next, we'll take some of those concepts and play them out to test what the impacts might be. So an example of this, and I think somebody mentioned it earlier, but what if we changed the land use of a block from industrial to residential? We'll look at the impacts to traffic, parking, schools, and any other key issues that may be defined by the sub-community goals and objectives. We'll work with stakeholders to fully develop a couple of options, and then collect feedback from the community about what they're interested in seeing move forward. We can use that direction to develop a preferred alternative, incorporating any key placemaking elements that will help achieve the sub-community vision. Once we have that as our framework for the future, we will develop recommendations for implementing that vision. Deliverables will include draft recommendations, maps of key improvements and catalytic projects, and an implementation matrix that assigns costs, timelines, and responsible party for each of the recommendations. The final phase of work will be planned documentation and hopefully adoption. I like to include this in the scope, because while a lot of the work will be documented throughout the process, packaging it all together and going through a series of review cycles is time-consuming, and I think it helps to sort of identify this upfront and be clear about the time commitments that this effort takes. So we'll go through a couple of draft and review cycles for the planned document, and we're also talking about how to create some more interactive webpages that would complement the plan and provide quick captures for interested community members. So we've built the scope of work to include engagement throughout the process, but I want to go through some of our thoughts on the engagement program for sub-community planning and get your feedback on what we've been developing so far. I think you're all familiar with the engagement spectrum from the stakeholder engagement framework. We've been working with a couple of different departments, in particular, the engagement staff from the city manager's office, and we believe that sub-community planning offers a really excellent opportunity to operate in this collaborative space of the spectrum. This means that stakeholders will really direct a lot of the ideas and recommendations for the future of a sub-community plan, and will collaborate with staff, boards, and council to identify how their sub-community will meet citywide goals. This process is also pretty time-consuming for both staff and the entire community, who will have a say in how these areas evolve with the city. It's a lot of work to develop material and establish multiple lines of communication, and it's also asking a lot of stakeholders to participate, but this can also be a really fun process and provide great benefits to the plan. So while there are six phases of work, we really see three major stages for community engagement that ask and answer the questions, who are you? So as an example, who is Central Boulder? Who do you want to be, and how do we get there? These are the big questions that will depend on stakeholders to help us answer. The who are you stage aligns with phases one and two of the scope, and will help us complete the picture about each sub-community. We anticipate phases one and two will take about 14 weeks. The who do you want to be stage will help develop concepts and informed scenario testing. This will take some time, and we anticipate phases three and four to be complete within 22 weeks. The how do we get there stage will be the hard work of identifying paths towards implementation. It should take 12 weeks. We're also building in 14 weeks for planned documentation, webpage development, and a four-week public review and comment period on the draft plan. The work plan we've built for a sub-community plan anticipates a 16-month production schedule with an additional eight weeks built into the plan to provide time for review and iteration cycles and alignment with board and council schedules. We believe we can complete a sub-community plan in 18 months. So I would love to hear your feedback on the scope and community engagement approach, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I think we have about 30 minutes to discuss this topic before we move to the next.
We have less than that, but...
Okay.
I have a question too.
Sure.
On your, like, your second slide, way at the front? On the collaborate.
On the collaborate, uh, second one, uh, that one. Here, it says neighborhoods, city departments, boards, and council. It doesn't say the public. In your subsequent slides, you talked about the public.
Yes. I think I, when I say neighborhoods, I think I mean the public, everybody that's included.
I'll just throw that out there, because I think we're going to do questions and comments, that I think neighborhoods and community members, or something, a lot of people, just to clarify that, it's the folks in the planning area and the folks outside the planning area.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I think that's important, because, you know, if we're going to do a plan for downtown, it doesn't just belong to the people downtown.
And I think with community members is exactly the right way to say it, because that captures internal, external.
Yeah. So, that would just be one, I just, that was your intent, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I have a, just, comment on that? I think, having gone through the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan, when I saw just with neighborhoods, I think I understood what you meant, but my only concern was that it was just residential. And in the neighborhoods, in that sub-community, you have really important businesses, and, and so, there was real concerted effort in the North Boulder Plan to include people from all over the North Boulder Subcommunity, and that included neighbors as well as business people. And I guess, I wouldn't put the inside and outside as equal, but I would, I would say that since these are sub-community plans, that if you want people to really engage, there needs to be, outside people can come, and they certainly did participate in the North Boulder Plan, but I would say that, for the most part, it was dominated by North Boulder people. And I think the point of these sub-community plans is to get people engaged and to get them to understand options and things and to move forward. But I think to make the outside and inside the subcommunity completely equal, I think will lose some...
Let's not even discuss how equal. Let's just make sure they're both engaged.
And, right. Yes. And I just wanted to say, I saw the word stakeholder in this document a few times, and that seems to cover a lot of that as well. So, thank you for that.
Mary.
So, I just wanted to add to the same discussion that, especially in the East Boulder Subcommunity, where we discussed the south side of Arapahoe and north side, you know, that area that's separated by Arapahoe, and how important it is to include the people on the south side for that sub-community and the north side. So, it's important to, you know, that, that, the influence, the people influenced by that sub-community or that area be included. And so, I think stakeholders is a good way to say it. And, yeah, so...
How about, I think, community members and stakeholders. I mean, Lisa and I just thought neighborhoods, stakeholders, community members. Why not all three?
Sure.
No? Too many?
No, no, no.
No, no, I just, we're saying, that's fine, the mouthful, but I think it gets at the geographical issue, the business issue, the scope of influence.
I mean, it jumped out at me when I first saw the slide that businesses weren't included here. And, you know, I knew that you intended them, and you mentioned them later, but I think calling them out here, just for whoever may see this, if it gets stuck up on our website or something, it just helps, you know, it's a political issue.
Right. And I'll just make a comment about stakeholders. I know what you mean by them, but when the North Boulder Plan started, the stakeholders were only people, the business people, and the neighbors were kicked out. And I made the point at council one night from that side, that the stakeholders were everybody, and that actually, the neighbors had far more of a stake and investment in the community. So, I think, when you think about their numbers and their total investments and all of that. So, I think trying to include people, all these different, is good, so.
So, I think you got the take-home, which is, it needs to be defined inclusively just about everywhere we say it.
Okay.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah.
Can you go back to your questions, then? Sam?
Yeah. I just wanted to go to the webpage where you put that up, because it first shows up on Phase 6, right? It's like, kind of, the last phase of sub-community plan webpage. And, you know, luckily, we have webpages now for every sub-community. And so, when we're doing a plan, I think that needs to become alive with, like, the schedule and the process and the steps, because many, many people will only pay attention when it's their sub-community. And so, to have their update page be the page that describes it, gives the background, and also gives the schedule and this phasing, you know, people will come awake when this is happening in their sub-community, and they won't know what you've put together. So, I actually think you could use the sub-community plan webpage very effectively to keep those who are digitally engaged apprised of what's going on.
Other thoughts? Aaron and...
Okay. So, real quickly, I just wanted to say that the move, moving of the boundaries for the different sub-communities was really the way that you laid it out with the numbered lines, and then on one map, and then the revised boundaries on the next map was really, really helpful and clear. And, and I think that the way that you drew those, redrew those boundaries made complete sense, so.
And we'll be talking about that next.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
We'll move on to that, but...
I got ahead of myself. I was so impressed by it.
She's going to present it. You could be impressed when she does it. Anything else on this phase? Can you go to your question? What's our question?
Yes. Let's see. Here we go.
We agree.
Six phases of the scope of work. Do you find that appropriate? And do you agree with the proposed approach for community engagement?
Aaron.
Yeah. I think you've done a very thorough job. I think it lays out all the necessary steps, so thank you. So, it was a very solid plan. The one thing that I just wanted to offer was, you know, sometimes, things are more controversial than others. So, I saw you built in time for iterating the plan, right? Hear feedback, change a little bit, hear more feedback. If we end up with some significant disagreements in the community, that process may take a little longer. So, I just wanted to make sure that we allow ourselves some flexibility, that if we do have bigger issues, that we let one go a little longer. Maybe we need to add another couple months for a couple more iterations. So, just that we keep that in mind and maybe build in some flex time to make sure, because we don't want to, when people start feeling rushed, then, then things go worse, right? So...
Yeah, that's a good point.
Is that all you?
That was it.
Well, I just colloquy on that. Whenever people are not getting their, their outcome that they're after, the temptation is to put on the brakes, and they would, there's, there's two kinds of delay. There's tactical delay, and then there's really going around the iteration loop again. And I think, you know, just as Aaron said, to be prepared for it. There, in some, some communities might be a very controversial issue, and it's going to cause some people to dig in their heels, and rather than just trying to press past that because of schedule, you can make a lot more progress if you go around one more time. So, I think Aaron's right about that.
Well, and can I just add? Some of this stuff is very easy to anticipate. You know there's going to be a couple big issues in this area that, and I guess recognizing them early and planning for the controversy and get, embracing it strategically, I think is really important. So, I do think tailoring within that framework, the process to acknowledge that will be helpful.
Yeah. I think once we select a sub-community, we'll be able to identify those quicker and plan for them.
Lisa?
And I'll just say, well, planning is absolutely critical. It's also important in the sub-community plan to include the arterials, the main corridors, and, you know, the streets and stuff, because it will, it will help determine what happens on the street. So, whether you have a two, two- or three-lane street versus a four- or five-lane street really dictates the scale of the development that can be on there. So, I think, as you go into your sub-community plan, to make sure that the transportation planners are also part of that, because people will want to address that.
I just wanted to comment on your, in the community engagement, the idea of delivering memorable experiences.
Sure.
I think that's really important. Participants in the sub-community planning process should find the process engaging and memorable, that you included that, because that way, I think you really opt more towards a good outcome.
Well, either way, it'll be memorable.
Yeah, right.
I would suggest adding pictures of kittens and puppies might help.
Great, great.
It must be memorable. Lisa tells us about it all the time.
I mean, I can tell you some...
Memorable in a good way.
Great things, and then things that were really pretty shocking, but it was fun.
Mary.
And it was memorable.
Memorable, good.
So, I wanted to thank you for the lines on the maps. No, just kidding. Just wait, just wait. Let me click it. No, that, for recognizing that this is going to operate in the collaborative space of the community engagement, and recognizing that it's the most time-consuming piece of it. And, and so, that's really great, that approaching it collaboratively from the very start is a good thing. Great.
Okay.
I just want to answer yes and yes to these two. I think, I think it's really well laid out, very clear.
Yeah. I think we have a great framework. Anything else on this part?
Keep moving. Okay. So, let's talk about boundaries. I'm going to present some information and recommendations on potential revisions to the existing boundaries and some thoughts about where we might want to start, and I look forward to hearing your thoughts. So, to start, I just want to make clear how we use boundaries in planning. Boundaries help us identify the area of study, and they provide a defined area from which we can extract data for analysis. Beyond that, sub-community boundaries in Boulder do not have a regulatory function, and we are not limited to only places or spaces within those lines when we conduct a sub-community plan. So, here are our existing boundaries for the 10 sub-communities. I think you each received a packet of maps as attachment C, and I'm going to click through some of these. Great. I think that might be easier to reference than the screen. When we last met, council gave direction to explore potential revisions to the existing boundaries with particular attention to the eastern sub-communities. So, some best practices for drawing boundaries in areas are that you want any areas created to be relatively compact. You don't want too many, sort of, like, extremities. You want the areas created to be contiguous, so you don't want to cross back and forth between two sub-communities. It's helpful to have the areas that are created to have pretty similar population numbers, and you don't want to divide neighborhoods or parcels into more than one sub-community. Our team took a look at the land use designations across the city as related to the boundaries, as well as the current zoning. Then, we zoomed into the eastern side of the city and studied a few factors that could influence the boundaries: land cover and parcel patterns, census tracts, natural assets such as parks and open space, but also the hydrology of the area and any related wetlands. We took a look at neighborhood boundaries from a couple of perspectives, and also dove into some of the data indicating change, like property sales, new certificates of occupancy, planned capital improvements, as well as completed and ongoing planning work. And we also just got out there. We took a couple of drives through this region of the city, walked around some of the neighborhoods, shopping areas, and neighborhood centers to get a better sense of this side of town. Our team iterated around 12 different options. We narrowed that down to the three alternatives that are included in your packet, and then developed these proposed revisions for the current boundaries, and I'll talk through each of these.
You didn't give us one of those.
The...
That map.
This guy?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I will...
The one that I like so much.
I was going to say that.
It doesn't have the proposed ones.
It doesn't have the proposed.
That's here, it's in your packet.
Well, I'll go through each, I'll go through them one by one. So, the first is to reflect the eastern zone of influence of the university. We recommend expanding the Colorado University southeastern boundary from Colorado Avenue to Bear Canyon Creek. Then, we propose realigning the boundary between Crossroads and East Boulder from the BNSF rail tracks out to Foothills Parkway. This aligns with the Transit Village area boundaries. We also propose connecting the Palo Park residential neighborhoods with their local neighborhood center, realigning the southern boundary from Colorado 119 to Belmont Road. This also applies to the neighborhoods west of the airport. We push the boundary of the Palo Park region out to Airport Road. Finally, to incorporate all Area 2 land that is not open space, we added the Knollwood neighborhood to the Central Boulder sub-community. One of the issues council specifically asked us to look at on the east side is whether or not Arapahoe Road serves as the best boundary line between east and southeast Boulder. We took a look at some of the current land use and parcel ownership patterns of this area and discussed where the opportunities for change might be. We also examined the zoning a bit more closely to see where the opportunities might exist there. The outcomes of the 2018 East Arapahoe Transportation Plan and the 2016 ULI Technical Advisory Panel Report for the 55th and Arapahoe area also provided some context about the future of neighborhoods north and south of Arapahoe. As council noted the last time we met, there is a great opportunity at the 55th and Arapahoe intersection. Recently, Gold Boulder, in coordination with the planning staff, has submitted an application for a Dr. Cog grant to develop a 55th and Arapahoe Station Area Master Plan as a next step to the East Arapahoe Transportation Plan. This master plan would provide guidance for this area into the future and coordinate potential interest for changes with plans for a regional transportation hub and streetscape improvements. Our group found that this type of work might be the best method for addressing specific change at the 55th and Arapahoe area. Other factors we looked at indicate that Arapahoe could continue to provide a stable boundary between east and southeast Boulder sub-communities. And then, I heard a couple hours ago that we should find out about whether or not we receive that grant funding this week, so stay tuned. The recommendations result...
Can I just ask you?
Yes.
In the context of something like that, how do you address corridors in the context of neighborhoods, right? Because corridors have two sides, and can you just speak to that? Because almost all of these are defined by roads that are corridors.
How do you address corridors related to kind of integrating the land use and transportation?
Well, if we do an area plan with one half of a corridor, how does that work, right? You wouldn't ever do a plan with one side of Broadway and not the other, right?
It's the areas of influence concept, right?
Yeah. I think that's what we were trying to communicate when we talked about areas of influence in the memo, is that the boundary line does not exclude the other side of the street from both participating and being included in recommendations.
Okay.
So, let's say we go with a hard Arapahoe boundary, and some kind of plan is created for both sides of Arapahoe, and then it's adopted. So, would that be like the, what is that, Southeast Boulder area plan? I mean, or sub-community plan, what's adopted? I mean, like, in the North Boulder one, we know exactly what the boundaries are, and, like, we didn't go south of Iris, which maybe we should have, but we didn't. I just, it's Suzanne's question, how to make sure both sides of the street complement each other, have complementary uses, and function well together. And we came into a little bit of some hiccups that required a bit of work when we looked at Iris and 28th, and a little bit west, and you have a smaller shopping center on the north side and a much larger shopping center on the south side, and they, they weren't... north side and a much larger shopping center on the south side, and they weren't connecting. And so, that wasn't done in the North Boulder plan. We had to come back and address that a little bit later. And so I guess my only concern is that while we're going through this, we make sure we get the other side of that street into the plan and so that it's integrated.
I would say, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but let's say you were to start with the East Boulder sub-community plan. Arapahoe is a major component and a major corridor of that sub-community. If we were to study that corridor and find that the south side of Arapahoe might require some land use change or zoning change, that would be included in the East Boulder sub-community plan. When you then did the Southeast Boulder sub-community plan, Arapahoe corridor is, you know, a major component of Southeast Boulder as well. And so, whenever that process were to come up, it's a great opportunity to check in on that and make sure that the recommendations that were included in the first one are delivering what the community was hoping for. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful.
Okay, I've got just a couple more. So the recommendations result in this proposed diagram, and I want to get your feedback on these, but just two more slides, I think. The last piece of the puzzle is related to prioritization and selecting a sub-community to be the first area for planning. When we met at the study session in September, council indicated that identifying areas undergoing change would be a primary factor in prioritizing sub-communities. So we looked at a couple of different indicators and classified them based on data sources. So the hard numbers for things like residential demolitions, property sales, and certificates of occupancy are described as areas with evidence of change. Areas planning for change include parts of the city that have recently completed or are currently undergoing planning exercises. And then the areas of described change highlight areas like 55th and Arapahoe, as we just discussed, which have been described by council as an area experiencing change. So we studied all of these issues citywide based on the proposed sub-community boundaries and recommend the following three sub-communities as priority areas for planning. So those are East Boulder, Palo Park, and Central Boulder. So, we can move to the questions. The first one is, does council agree with initiating sub-community planning utilizing the revised boundaries? And does council agree with the recommended prioritization of the first three sub-communities for planning?
Let's just start with a couple questions.
Sure.
We had talked about, you've put three priorities, and we had talked about nailing down the next one for sure, and then the others are on deck, what? Is that how we're doing three, but-
Yeah, I think we had, you know, identify the plan on the course, the plan in the gate, the plan on deck. So that's how we set that up.
Do people have questions? Otherwise, let's answer question three.
I'm going to answer question three.
Is everybody fine with the new boundaries? And this is where we can gush about the-
Yeah. Here, come on. It's your turn.
That was awesome. And so I would answer the questions, yes and yes.
Okay, Erin?
I agree with, on yes. I've always found with communication that setting good boundaries is important, so I thank you for doing that. Just one thought I had, actually, I particularly liked the way that you took the Palo Park area and expanded it, that crossroads got smaller, and so that linked those residential neighborhoods into their neighborhood commercial centers. I thought that made a huge amount of sense. And then I just, no offense to Palo Park, which is a fantastic neighborhood, one of our best neighborhoods in the city, is that still the right name for that whole area?
That's a good question, and yeah, I'd be interested in hearing your feedback. I think there were a couple of sub-communities where we were questioning, is this the right name for this area still? So.
Do you have one in mind?
Well, there's the super exciting, like, North-Central Boulder.
Well, that would be northeast, right?
I was going to suggest we start the public process and let them say.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Cindy wins.
There we go.
Okay, so in terms of boundaries, people are good with boundaries. Is anybody not good?
And I was just going to, I kind of had the floor say yes and yes. Thank you, Mary, for that, leading that. And I think the new boundaries are really great. They make a lot of sense. I don't know if you were finished, Erin. Yeah.
Thank you. I just had one other thought on just the number four. I agree with the prioritization of the sub-communities, but I just want to make sure that we retain the flexibility. It's going to be a while till we get to number three that we have the flexibility to shift those in the future.
Something to come up?
Yep, never happens, never happens. Everything goes to plan. Yes and yes to both of these. The one thing I'll say is that when it comes to the East Boulder, Southeast Boulder in particular, but also potentially where you have Arapahoe dividing, like, the Central Boulder from the hill, we just have to really honor those influence zones at that point because in the North Boulder sub-community and the Central Boulder sub-community, our major corridors are captured within the sub-community boundaries. So in some cases, it's super easy, but I think in the ones, I mean, that's what happened with the Sarapahoe planning process, the last one, was that people on the south side felt that they were being left out of big proposed changes on the north side and at 55th and Arapahoe, and it resulted in a backlash, which kind of put the kibosh on some of the work we were doing there. So I think in this case, lesson from the past is, and I don't think 36 is the same way, you know, 36 is a boundary, but that's a hard one to cross, right? But Arapahoe, it's like, everybody who lives out there uses those commercial areas as their neighborhood notes, so.
So, I want to ask a question about Palo Park, Palo Park being second. So those of you who think that that's a good, I want to hear your reasonings. I mean, there's a bunch of change happening in Central Boulder, Uni-Hill's changing, I mean, there's a bunch of other big things happening, so why would that be second? What are we excited about there?
Diagonal?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so that's, did that just get moved into there? So that's, okay. So that's, okay. So that's, and that's why it's in there, is for diagonal. Okay.
Could I just add that, what you just mentioned, Uni-Hill and Alpine-Balsam and that Central Boulder, also has the corridor plan? So, and then there's going to be the area plan associated with Alpine-Balsam, so a lot of, the bulk of that will be addressed.
So I guess then, sorry, let me just tie a bow on that. I think when we talk about prioritization of sub-community plans, we might as well go ahead and note that these other particular area plans are happening somewhat, whatever that word is.
In parallel.
Co- coincidentally, or whatever, at the same time period, and I almost-
Concurrently.
Yeah, concurrently. Sorry, I'm still jet-legged. So I just think that will help people understand, otherwise, I think people will get confused about what's the difference between, anyhow, if we go ahead and call them out, then people go, okay, area plan's smaller, they're about these specific things, but meanwhile, back at the ranch, we're doing these larger ones. I think that's helpful in presenting this to the public. Who had their hand up? You did. Lisa.
I would be remiss not to just say, it's not in here. It's not ready to come in here, but the municipal airport might need a sub-community plan at some point in the future, and that's out on J Road, maybe 20 years from now, but.
The other thing to keep in mind here, as long as we're being prospective about things, is there's the whole planning reserve. And so how, I assume that's going to be in the North Boulder sub-community, but it's something that probably just needs to be anticipated and, you know, decide how to deal with it, because at some point, it's probably coming in. Might be 10 years, might be 20 years, but, you know, it's a big area. And it's a big area that's going to have a lot of new development.
And, can I just colloquy? And on that, I think, you know, while it's into the future, there's, you know, US 36 has been developed nicely on the south side, and so I don't know if it would be part of North Boulder, but to make sure that the uses are complementary, and we already have different uses, like the Gateway Park and different things that are on the north side that people try to get across to on that street.
Okay, are we good? See, when you guys do really good work, it goes really fast, so thank you again.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. That's all we can say, and so thank you, and thank you, Jane, for hiring Kathleen.
Yes, I agree.
Well, I'll take the credit, but I don't think I deserve it.
Yeah, very well organized, very clear thinking, and the redraw of the boundaries is super helpful.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
No, no, we have another 90-minute topic that we're going to do in 60 minutes.
Forty-five? Thirty.
That went well. That's right. You want to?
Hey, next is your severe weather sheltering update.
This is amazing. I'll start. Yeah. Okay, are you going to announce this? You just did, okay. See, I'm telling you. I'm starting to do it.
I didn't, would you- Next is your update on the severe weather sheltering.
And this will be handled by Kurt Fernhoffer and Wendy Schwartz. Kurt?
Since we provoked this, maybe Erin and I could just say a few words about where this came from. And we did put out a hotline, what feels like, a while ago.
Almost a month ago.
It was a month ago. That's why it feels fuzzy. And I'm going to have Erin talk about it first. Go ahead.
All right, I guess I'm up. So, you know, understanding that we switched about a year and a half ago to severe weather sheltering that's triggered by temperature rather than by time of year, and with thresholds of 32 degrees Fahrenheit dry and 40 degrees wet. And, you know, Suzanne and I attended the memorial service about a month ago for the individuals who died in the last year in Boulder while experiencing homelessness, and there were 17 of them, and we read the names and reflected on their experiences. And a number of the people there talked about how difficult it is to live on the streets and about the impact that living outside in the cold has on people and on their bodies, and about the health problems that result and sometimes in the deaths that result from exposure and hypothermia and things like that is either a main factor or contributing factor. And, you know, Suzanne and I have both done the Attention Homes sleep-out before, and slept, you know, in a sleeping bag on a cold night, and, you know, of course camping, things like that. You have some sense of how cold a 33-degree night can get. And just from that, just really coming from that and feeling like it's particularly for those most vulnerable members of our community, the members of the homeless, homeless folks often are people suffering from mental health issues, substance abuse issues, and various other difficulties that require them to sleep out on the streets when it's 33 degrees out is not enough in a community as well-resourced and compassionate as ours is. So therefore proposing that we change our severe weather sheltering to be for the winter season rather than triggered on temperature thresholds, so.
Yes, that's very good, and I'll just add that it has provoked, I think, a very good dialogue, and we're going to hear a lot more about it. I do think that, I would add to that, that I think we are on the right path. We don't want to undermine any part of what we're doing, and we want to continue to incentivize people to seek services and exit homelessness, and we've been emphasizing that, and that's a good thing. But nonetheless, wanted to bring this forward as an element that we need to look at. So, with that, and we have some other maybe ideas, but with that, we-
Yeah, and just, I'll make other points when we discuss it. I just want to provide some background and then turn to staff for presentation, and then we can have a discussion about the topic.
There you go.
So, good evening. Kurt Fernhoffer, Director of Housing and Human Services, and Wendy Schwartz will be doing the presentation this evening. I'm just going to make a few comments to start us off. So everything we're going to be presenting to you is information that supports the strategy that you approved just over a year ago, which is really to focus on getting people out of being homeless and getting them into housing and services. And I think regardless of our differences of opinions tonight, I think we share that in common. On Monday morning, Sam Weaver asked me to personalize this a little bit and give a story or so. So we reached out to one of the police officers who works on the hot team, the homeless outreach team. I'm going to do two very succinct stories of two homeless individuals that have been impacted by this strategy over the past year. So the first one is Danny, who's 55 years old and has been homeless in Boulder since approximately 2010. He has multiple chronic impairments, and street life led to an extensive criminal history, including assaults, which led to hundreds of days in jail. Between his addiction and his aggression, he was not allowed at the shelter for a period which suited him fine. With recent health scares and an overall decline in his well-being, he reached out for help. We worked with a number of service providers over several months to get him stable. The shelter agreed to his return, and he was identified to receive rental assistance through the city's new permanent supportive housing program administered by Boulder Housing Partners and the shelter. He signed a lease and moved into an apartment in January of 2019. Danny tells us, you guys probably saved my life, but there were two key factors that led to this outcome. First, the Boulder shelter worked with him to welcome him back for overnight sheltering. Despite his own reluctance to return to the shelter, staff made it possible for him to have a safe and warm place to spend the night. Second, shelter case managers worked incredibly hard to find a landlord who was willing to rent to him despite his criminal history. And then similarly, Scott, 56 years old, has been periodically homeless in Boulder for nearly 20 years. Scott is strongly independent, suffers from multiple chronic impairments, including several mental health issues, but is also strongly service-resistant, preferring to keep to himself. Scott has been using a variety of homeless services, but none of them consistently for years. He was referred to us by the Boulder Municipal Court Homeless Navigator. After working with him on a variety of tasks, we believed he would be a good candidate for permanent supportive housing. Again, he was matched with the city's new permanent supportive housing program, and the shelter staff found an appropriate apartment for him where he has been living for almost a year now. So those are a couple of the success stories of this strategy, but it's not just a strategy, it's about partners in our community working together, getting all the homeless providers to really be working hand-in-hand with each other, with each one of these individuals. So I'm going to hand it over to Wendy, who will give us the background information that we hope will be helpful for you in your deliberations tonight.
Good evening, council members. Wendy Schwartz, Human Services Policy Manager. Tonight, we'll go over background on severe weather shelter and how it fits into the bigger picture of our county-wide system, homeless solutions for Boulder County. Different considerations for, I'm used to using a touchscreen and then couldn't. Hold on a second, we've got a little snafu here. Oh, wait, I just found the mouse. There we go. Okay. It's hard when you touch the screen and then nothing moves. The second item, different considerations for the proposal to expand severe weather shelter beyond current weather triggers. It's also my understanding that there's some interest in a program called Boulder County Cares, which was previously run by Boulder Shelter- Cares, which was previously run by Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, and how people are helped when they're reluctant to use services. We'll finish with the next steps and some staff recommendations. For people that might be watching who are unfamiliar with our homeless services system, 365 nights per year, regardless of weather conditions, we have 210 beds available every single night for homeless adults in the city of Boulder. That's 160 at Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, and another 50 at Bridge House's Path to Home Navigation Program. Severe weather shelter has 72 beds that are supplemental to these nightly beds. These beds are opened up under certain weather conditions that are reflected on this slide. Bridge House has a contract with the city to provide severe weather shelter, and it's co-located at the Path to Home Navigation Center at 2691 30th Street. As part of the larger homeless services system in the county, 50 navigation beds are also provided in Longmont during the winter months by Hope for Longmont. Severe weather shelter is provided in the context of a larger countywide system implemented in October 2017. This new system is called Homeless Solutions for Boulder County. In this system, individuals have daily access to reserved beds as well as walk-up shelter. However, the new system changes the focus from emergency sheltering to getting people to housing as quickly as possible and supporting them with services to stay housed. This is because what we know from national evidence is that housing is the most effective way of addressing homelessness. Other changes in the new system are that we collect integrated systemic data, and we're outcomes-oriented. We're focused on measuring our success, and so far, we know that over 400 people countywide have been able to successfully exit our homeless services. One of the most exciting things about the new focus on housing exits is the momentum that's been created around bringing new housing resources and the supportive services to stay in housing to our county, thanks to the work of a broad range of partners, including other local government, housing authorities, local nonprofits, and faith organizations. This slide shows some recent successes in this area, including partners involved. But our housing success and the way we've housed over 400 people doesn't just depend on new resources like these. The focus on working with clients toward housing solutions versus just giving them short-term services has opened up the doors to existing and creative opportunities such as roommate situations in market-rate housings, or reunification with support systems in other places where people might have better options than they have in Boulder. These graphs show the types of housing people have exited to on the left, and reunification exits on the right. So, if you look at the graph in the left, you see that a little over two-thirds of the folks who have exited to housing locally have exited to market-rate solutions. A little over a quarter have exited to subsidized housing, so generally, people with a voucher or a housing unit that comes with a voucher support. And for 6%, the subsidy information is not available at this time. On the right-hand side, are reunification exits by destination, so you'll see that over 70% of the people that have been re-unified have been re-unified with support systems outside of our state. A little over a quarter have been re-unified somewhere in Colorado but outside of Boulder County, and then the remaining 3% have been re-unified with support systems inside the county.
Quick question for you. Could you go back to the previous slide?
Yes.
Do we know what the raw numbers are for these as well? The percentages are interesting, but also the numbers.
Yes, we do, Sam, and so, what I can do is get back to you, because I'd have to take our 68% by our housing number, and so, we have the data.
I'm really only interested in the totals for each of those pie charts, doesn't need to be broken down, I can do that math, so.
Yeah, so, I'm checking my notes here. In the housing section, the local housing section, so that's the graph on the left, the total number there is going to be 175. And on the reunification chart, the one on the right, the number is going to be 155.
Thank you. Any other questions? And the follow-up, so, there's been 400 exits, that's about 300, what are the other 100?
So, the breakdown we have is for the exits within or from City of Boulder services, and that is 390. And so, in addition to the 175 in local housing and the 155 in reunification, sorry, 160 reunification, it was 155 outside of Boulder. So, 175 housing, 160 reunification, 43 into long-term programming. So, an example of long-term programming would be the ready-to-work house. So, that's when you leave emergency shelter and you're in a transitional housing program, you know, that might be one or two years. And 12 into residential treatment, so, things like Fort Lyon.
Thank you.
So, in looking at the proposal for opening severe weather shelter every night, we looked at four main areas, shelter utilization patterns, the likelihood of intended safety improvements, potential unintended consequences, and different timeframes and cost options for additional shelter nights. And we'll go through each of these categories one by one. First, starting with shelter utilization patterns. So, we know that last season, the median nights used per person in severe weather shelter was two. So, most people using the service were not depending on it as an overall winter solution. Although, we have, and then in the lower box here, we have had some peak nights this season where we've neared or hit capacity at some programs, but on an average night since October 1st, 2018, we've had 11 empty beds at Path to Home, five empty beds at the Housing Focus Shelter Program, which is at Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, and 19 empty beds at severe weather shelter.
So, I want to dig into something that I think you said. You said we came near capacity or at capacity. Have we turned people away this sheltering season?
We have...
Because of capacity issues?
We have not turned anyone away from severe weather shelter. So, Boulder Shelter for the Homeless has hit capacity on some nights this season, and on those nights, the individuals turned away were referred to severe weather shelter and could access shelter there.
Okay, thank you.
But, to clarify, I should say, there have been some nights where, and this, interestingly, was particularly true in October, where we did not hit severe weather shelter triggers, and Boulder Shelter for the Homeless did hit capacity some of those nights and turned people away, and then they did not have that option.
Oh, quick follow-up question. On the nights where the Boulder Shelter hits capacity, and then severe weather shelter is open, and people are referred to severe weather shelter, is transportation made available?
They are provided with bus tickets to get there.
Thank you.
So, can you just, so, in October, okay, so, we didn't hit the trigger, but they still, they didn't have places to go. Is that the only month that we know that, was that when we started?
There, in addition, there was one night in November, and one night in December, when the shelter hit capacity and severe weather shelter was not open.
So, when you say the shelter hit capacity, does that mean that the navigation services beds, were there still those available for them to go to?
The nights when the shelter hit capacity, navigation may have had empty beds, and the system at this point has not been set up to, I mean, on severe weather shelter nights, then the capacity is shared. So, for instance, there was a night when severe weather shelter was very full, and they referred people to empty beds at Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, and they stayed there. But on non-severe weather shelter nights, then thus far, when navigation beds are open, it has not overflowed from the shelter into those navigation beds.
Okay, and because coordinated entry assigns you to either Path to Home or the shelter, right?
That's correct.
It's interchangeable.
That's correct.
You're assigned to the shelter, you show up to the shelter, there's no beds, you don't go to Path to Home.
That's correct. Unless it's a severe weather shelter night.
So, according to Isabel, another wrinkle on this to understand is sometimes people who are assigned to the shelters, they have a bed waiting for them at the shelter, will end up staying in severe weather sheltering at the site on 30th. And that's a little, you know, it just puts more people into the beds at severe weather sheltering that could otherwise be opened up. It's capacity that doesn't get used.
So, can I sum up by saying, in general, we don't turn people away, but there are some exceptions that are complicated.
That's, I think that's a good way of putting it, Sam. Okay, everybody ready to move to the next slide? Yeah. Okay, so, that was the first part of shelter utilization patterns. The next part that we looked at was just, what's the relationship between temperature and attendance at severe weather shelter? And I know that these graphs probably look hard to interpret. They, on the left, it's last season, and on the right, it's this season. And the vertical axis is the number of people attending severe weather shelter, and the horizontal axis is the temperature. So, as it goes to the right, the temperature goes up, and each of those dots represents a night of severe weather shelter, so you can see what the temperature was and how many people attended. And so, I guess the quickest way to explain this is, what we didn't find was a strong relationship between temperature and attendance. There's a very weak correlation between when the temperature rises or drops and how many people show up at severe weather shelter. So, if there was a strong correlation, we would really expect the dots to really have a pretty strong line that go from the upper-left corner to the lower-right corner. Instead, you'll see, you know, that we have an assortment of high and low attendance at high and low temperature points. So, for example, the attendance on most nights this season below 25 degrees is less than the attendance on most nights between 25 and 35 degrees.
So, for last year, I see your point, that it's pretty scattershot, and the correlation line is not very deeply slanted. This year, I see a correlation, and it seems really distinctive.
There's more of a correlation this year than there was last year, but it's still weak, and actually, what I'm noticing is that when we squeezed in the two graphs, the line there got a little bit distorted, but the correlation, last year, there was zero correlation. This year, there's a weak correlation, and so, but I apologize, because you're right, it might not look that way on the graph.
Well, I'm not sure how weak that is on the right side.
Yeah, well, I would say there's a way to answer that. You do the correlation ratio, and it tells you, so, you can get the strength of the correlation from a metric.
And we have that, and I will send that to you.
That's fine, and I agree with Erin. I mean, it's pretty clear that this year, we've seen a lot more, and it's, to me, my impression has been, it's been a pretty chilly year so far, so.
It has been, I mean, we saw more early-season cold days. Next, we looked at life safety goals, and what evidence might tell us about how moving to severe weather shelter every night could impact goals for saving lives. To do this, we used data from the Boulder County Coroner. And what we found, and I'll get into more details on this, is that the coroner's data does not necessarily suggest a life safety advantage to this change, and that the causes of death for people experiencing homelessness suggest issues potentially solvable by housing, but probably not by shelter. The slide, this slide shows us multiple years of data on the number of deaths of individuals experiencing homelessness by, as reported by the Boulder County Coroner's Office. The dotted line, and these, this is countywide numbers, the dotted line between 2013 and 2014 represents roughly when Boho changed its criteria from purely weather-triggered, as we have now, to being open every night, November 15th to March 15th. The dotted line between 2017 and 2018 represents the start of the first full year of coordinated entry, homeless solutions for Boulder County, and a return to severe weather sheltering on a weather-triggered basis all year. One thing I want to note, the coroner's annual report for 2018 is not yet complete, so I contacted the coroner's office directly, and they provided me with the 2018 data. So, it is preliminary, although they said they did not think it was likely to change significantly between now and when their final report comes out. This slide shows a correlation between severe weather shelter every night and higher deaths among those experiencing homelessness. While correlation is not causation, the data does not suggest a life safety advantage to offering severe weather shelter every night in addition to our regular shelter programs.
Bob, we have a question.
Wendy, what's the definition of transient?
So, in the coroner's report, they give a description of how they figured this out, and I should say that the way it's worded on this graph is because that's the way that the language is in the coroner's report. So, what they record is reports that they get from law enforcement, hospitals, hospice settings, where the individual is reported as being homeless at the time of their death.
Is this not necessarily people dying outside, this is maybe somebody doesn't have a permanent address, or do you know how they?
Well, it would absolutely include people dying outside, and usually, those reports come through law enforcement.
But does each one of these deaths represent somebody who did die outside, or does it include people who died outside and people who have no permanent address, who may have been couch-surfing or sleeping in a non-permanent situation but were inside at the time of their death?
It would include, it would include people who were homeless but who were brought into, you know, a healthcare setting, for example. So, people who died outside, were found outside, plus people who died at the hospital and were reported as being brought in from the street. And I think, I mean, I think to get into, you know, to more details, Bob, I think, you know, we'd probably have to talk more to the, you know, the coroner, because obviously, they review thousands of medical records, and so, you know, they've constructed a definition that they describe in their report that they think is reasonable, but that they acknowledge is not perfect.
Lisa?
So, Wendy, on this graph, it indicates 14 people, is that correct, in 2018?
13 was the number we received.
But, do those individuals also include people who were formerly homeless and had gotten transitional housing?
No.
Because I know people who have gotten into housing, and then because they had such a rough life or whatever, they die prematurely, but they are housed.
Yeah, so, Lisa, these numbers would not include those situations.
Okay, and would these include people who may have overdosed or whatever, outside, and died outside?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to know.
Do we know, is there any, in terms of overall...
Okay. That's, that's what I want to know. Do we know, is there any, in terms of overall, the homeless population, is, if we, if that were on the graph, would it have any relation to that? You know, like, is it, did the homeless population go up with those deaths over that time? Or, and maybe you don't know, but I'm just curious, because-
So there's two ways that we can look at that and examine that. And one is our point-in-time count. And so I can tell you that our numbers were not up during that time. They were relatively flat. I mean, they might have gone a little bit up, a little bit down, year to year, but relatively flat. The second is, the second way we can look at that and measure that is a graph that I'll show later in this presentation, which is how many people were accessing our shelter services in the city on a nightly basis. And what we do know is that from 2013 to 2017, it's true that we had an upward trajectory of people seeking shelter in the city of Boulder as Boho came into being, built its capacity up. You would see an upward trajectory of people seeking sheltering services in the city.
But not, that seems to contradict what you just said about point-in-time, so.
Well, we have, we have issues with the point-in-time count, because that's really who you find. That's not necessarily who you have. But yes, correct.
Okay.
This is how the coroner ruled on causes of death for people in their definition of transient between the years of 2011 and 2017 in Boulder County. The most common causes of death were ruled as natural causes. And I think, I mean, for those of us who aren't in the coroner's business, then it's not always clear what's natural causes. The biggest example is usually some sort of heart disease or heart-related condition, as, you know, as a person who's not a physician, who's looked at past reports. The next two most common causes that you see down on the chart here are related to behavioral health, so substance abuse and suicide. About 3% of the deaths during this period were due to hypothermia, and another 4% were due to hypothermia with another complicating factor, such as alcohol, drowning, or blunt trauma. So when we look at this data, we really see the need to continue to pursue housing as a primary system goal. You know, most people really have complex physical and behavioral health problems, leading to premature death, you know, to the point you made earlier, Lisa. And so really making sure that they get housing, and housing with supportive services, probably if they've been chronically homeless, is a way that we can hopefully reduce the premature death, extend their lives. But those problems are unlikely to be solved in shelter. We looked at some potential unintended consequences of extending severe weather shelter to every night. First, more shelter that's associated with, that's not associated with housing goals or outcomes, may result in more people just cycling through the shelter system without getting into housing that could improve or extend their lives. Second, an increased focus on managing extensive shelter programs could limit the ability of community service providers to work with clients on positive outcomes. We are concerned that some long-term vulnerable residents could miss housing opportunities if resources and time are once again focused on emergency shelter. Lastly, our previous analysis, looking at other weather-triggered sheltering programs in the region, showed that our community institutes this service at higher temperatures than other communities. It's possible this could result in more people coming to Boulder and increasing our challenges in providing appropriate housing for those who are here. So this is the graph that I was referencing a little bit earlier, and this shows kind of some of our experience with shelter attendance and turnaways over recent years, and really particularly looking at the period when Boho was expanding. So we start down here in the lower-left corner with 2011, and the blue line shows the increasing attendance at Boho over those years. The yellow line that's on the top shows the number of turnaways at Boulder Shelter for the homeless. And so these were people on an annual basis that they would turn away due to capacity constraints during those years. So during the years 2013 through 2016, their turnaway numbers, as Boho was expanding, were very high, in the range of about 1,200 to 2,500, depending on the year. Last year, the first year of Homeless Solutions for Boulder County, they had 18 capacity turnaways. And our capacity in severe weather shelter was 100 and operating on a weather-triggered basis.
So I have a question on this. So I understand the numbers for the shelter. The numbers for Boho attendance, is that total served that year? Like in 2006, it's, that's average?
That's, that's like a nightly average.
It's a nightly average. So these two are different?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. They're different.
One's annual and one's-
Okay.
That's correct.
I'm trying to make sure I was understanding what was being compared.
And I don't understand the orange box.
Oh, sorry. That's showing the capacity of severe weather shelter in 2018, which was 100.
But that's nightly capacity?
Correct.
It should probably be on the right-hand scale, not the left-hand scale. I mean-
Correct.
Yeah, so it's, for what it's worth.
But, okay, but there's other severe weather capacity during those other years.
So if you're looking at 2011 and, you know, the historical years, then what's shown with the blue line in terms of the nightly average attendance is just Boho, because during that time, Boulder Shelter for the homeless, their capacity was flat. It was 160. So, you know, so our community sheltering attendance wasn't increasing on that front. Where it was increasing was the upward trend with Boho. And so, so yes, those numbers on the blue line don't represent the complete community sheltering capacity during those years. They represent the increase in people seeking shelter in the city during those years.
Wendy, do you happen to know if the turnaway numbers for the Boulder Shelter, were those 365-day numbers, or those just during the severe sheltering period? In other words, if we wanted to do an average per night, should we divide that by 180 or divide that by 365?
You, I'm going to look at Greg to double-check and make sure I'm right. But because the emergency winter sheltering program was only open October through April, yeah, he's nodding his head, it's October through April.
The turnaways are during that period of time, too?
Correct. Correct.
It looks like the turnaways averaged about 10 a night during that, I'm dividing those numbers all by 180, it comes out to about 10 or 12 or 15 on average.
I would, I would ask Greg Harms, CEO of Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, to weigh in on that. He provided us with the annual turnaway numbers.
Yes, that's true. Probably about 10 a night, although the variability was dramatic. We could have zero turnaways one night, and we could have 25 people, as high as 25 or 30 people on some particular nights, so.
Thanks, Greg.
Greg, as long as we've got you here, I just wanted to ask a question, because we're concerned about capacity numbers. And I was wondering about, is there capacity to do severe weather sheltering overflow at the shelter? If we had our severe weather shelter capacity fill up, would there be a way to do your common areas and to bring people in?
Well, we can't legally go over 160 people, but if we have space, so if we do our check-in, and by 7:00 PM, we know how many people are going to be in the shelter, and say we have 10 open beds, we work with Bridge House to say, if severe weather shelter is going to go over capacity, send those folks back to the shelter.
Thank you.
Let me just add, sorry, let me ask a follow-up question. When you say the legal capacity is 160, is that legal imposed by the city of Boulder? Or what's the legal constraint there?
Our land use approval-
Okay.
-is limited to 160.
So this is the agreement between the shelter and the city?
And the neighbors.
And the neighbors. I was going to say, you have the good neighbor plan.
Right. Got it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
This is a slide similar to one you've seen before in our other reports. And this shows the weather criteria for other regional weather-triggered shelters. So Boulder, severe weather shelter, we're the top line there. The one right below it was Hope in Longmont prior to the new system. They've converted to a navigation shelter model in the winter. But that was the standard prior to that. And the rest are a few other regional shelters that are weather-activated that we were able to find. And so Boulder is and has been, for some time, a community that generally triggered weather-activated shelter at higher temperatures. And so generally, we've offered more nights of weather-activated shelter than other regional shelters.
Can I interrupt you with a question there? I know that we don't require people who come to the severe weather shelter to go through coordinated entry, so we may not know the answer to this. But do we collect data on where people are coming from when they present themselves at the severe weather shelter?
We, we do not have a way of knowing that if they don't go through coordinated entry. If they went through coordinated entry, then, then we would know after, after the fact. When we have tried to look at that data, the data from the first year is pretty messy on that. And the reason it's messy is because, well, it's because Bridge House wasn't yet in the Boulder County Connect system for most of the season, which means it's a very complex manual matching process between the county coordinated entry data and the Bridge House data. And also, in the first year, some of the severe weather shelter information and the path to home information wasn't always as clearly delineated, so that makes the matching more complicated. So a long way of saying mostly no now, but in the future, now that we're all in one data system, it should be better.
And is that because we would require people to go through coordinated entry even for severe weather, or we would just ask that as a coordinated entry light, as they walk in the door, say, "Where'd you come from?"
Well, we would definitely be able to sort the data for people who used severe weather shelter and went through coordinated entry. And our estimate, you know, even this past year with the data complications, our estimate was, I believe, 60 to 70% of the people who used severe weather shelter at some point, went through coordinated entry at one point. So for that other 30 to 40%, if that trend holds, where we have 30 to 40% who don't go through coordinated entry, then our ability would be more limited to collect data on them.
Well, with respect to the 60% that do go through coordinated entry, what is the data telling us about where those folks are coming from?
That's where the messiness comes in.
Okay. So, but in the future, we hope to have less messiness?
Exactly.
Got it. Okay.
So I'll just put a coda onto that when I spoke with Isabel about this. That's one of the advantages of severe weather sheltering, co-located with navigation services, because when people in severe weather sheltering get up and get their breakfast and prepared to, there's an opportunity to touch and say, "Would you like some help with, you know, what's going on today?" And-
Yeah, yeah. As of December, when that service moved into the 30th Street site, then people are already at the coordinated entry site in the morning.
Great.
We took a look at some numbers for a few different scenarios for expanding severe weather shelter for every night. And one scenario we looked at at the top was only expanding it to every night for the months of December, January, and February. And the reason that we chose this time period to look at is because history shows us that those months are the months with the most consistently cold weather, when the shelter service would be open most days, even under the current weather criteria. This is also a situation pretty similar to the past Boho situation, when they were open every night between November 15th and March 15th. And so, as you can see, since we're halfway through this season, this season, that would estimate it, that would result in an estimated additional three nights at a cost of about $2,000. Next season, an estimated six additional nights at a cost of approximately $4,000.
Together, not per night.
Correct. Total. Total.
So this season and next season, I'm sorry, I lost track. This season, we're halfway through, so next season being 2019, 2020?
Exactly. So in other words, when we looked at calculating the numbers, we looked at what would it be if we changed it now, and we did it the rest of this season. And of course, those numbers are smaller, because we're already halfway through this winter.
Okay. So it's just half?
Yeah.
So then, what you're saying here is that, on average, December through February, there would be two nights at the current temperature thresholds where severe weather sheltering isn't open?
Give or take, yeah. Because those nights, I mean, because of the weather conditions here in Colorado, you know, we hit those triggers almost every night during those three months.
These had a 30 or so.
And again, you know, these are estimates. I mean, in any given year, we can have a surprisingly warm snap or cold snap, but these are the best estimates we've come up with. And then if we go a different direction, we looked at what the scenario would be if we opened up every night between October 1st and April 30th. And if we did that, that we estimate for this season, there would be approximately an additional 31 nights that we'd be open at a cost of about $21,000. Next season, we estimate it would be an additional 59 nights at a cost of about $40,000. An additional cost, so above what we're already paying.
Wendy, you have a question about those October through April 30th and those numbers, 21K and 40K. Where would that money come from? Would it come out of the housing budget? Would it be money that's, that's being, that could have been used for housing that is now being used for shelter?
Do you want, do you want to answer that, Kurt?
Isn't that up to us?
Yeah.
Wow.
No, this isn't the budget.
I think it is, it is somewhat up to you. But currently, there's no sort of affordable housing funds that goes into nightly shelter expenses. There was some affordable housing funds that went into the, a little bit of the renovations of the navigation, but that was a relatively small amount. Most of it came from the Human Services Fund.
So, yeah, go ahead. So I, as I understood it through conversations, there was, there is some, a voucher program, and that's not part of, that is or isn't part of the Affordable Housing Fund? Where is that?
Yes. So the voucher program is funded through the Affordable Housing Fund, and that's, that's $200,000 per year.
Okay. Thank you. So is this clarifying this? Otherwise, this is a question. We should let you finish, and then we can get on with discussing.
So I, I just have a question.
Yeah.
And in the last two years, how much have we spent, and I think Kurt was kind of going there, how much have we spent in providing severe weather service and navigation path, the navigation home, or in the path, I mean, the path to home? How much has that been? And where have those funds come from?
So our contract with Bridge House for severe weather shelter right now allows us to go up to a maximum amount of $140,000 for one year. We estimated before the season- We estimated before the season began that we would probably spend closer to $105,000 this year. Now, that being said, we were glad that we kind of put the worst-case scenario number of 140,000 in, because the start of the season was colder than usual. And so, you know, so what's in our budget right now for severe weather shelter? You know, we plan on about $140,000 a year. That is on top of what we pay Bridge House through their Path to Home navigation contract. So for the Path to Home navigation program, we spend about $750,000 a year, and that is operating money for Bridge House to run the program. And embedded within that operating money is, you know, staff reunification money, so when we buy people bus tickets, expenses that people might need to make the transition to housing, that type of thing. I should also say, we spend roughly $200,000 a year on the rent at 30th Street.
So basically, close to a million?
Yeah, I mean, basically, what we pay to Bridge House on an annual basis right now is in the neighborhood of 1.1, 1.2 million. We, our operating grant to the shelter is 230,000.
What does that, how much?
Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, 230,000 annually. And then, in addition, there were one-time renovation costs at the Path to Home Navigation Center. The first round was about $360,000 to get the initial site ready for the Path to Home program. And then, when we had to renovate the other side to allow severe weather shelter, that number, I believe, was around 60,000.
Thank you, and where is that coming from? Is that coming from Human Services, or is that from housing or affordable housing? Or are they kind of mixed?
Well, most of it is from what was traditionally looked at as human, there are a couple of different places in Human Services, so mostly Human Services is your real answer. Some was carved out of the Human Services Fund, and also council appropriated some additional money for us, 750,000 when we embarked on our new strategy. More of the capital costs have come from housing. And in addition, there was 1.9 in startup funding for one-time expenses.
Okay, let us let you finish.
There was a request for information on Boulder County Cares, which is a program that was previously operated by Boulder Shelter for the Homeless. I'll provide some basic information about this program, and I'm glad that Greg is here for more detailed questions. This is a program that began in the late 1990s, and shelter volunteers would drive around town, and their primary function was handing out cold-weather gear. The program originally operated seven nights a week. Last season, in the new system, the traditional program went down to three nights a week, and the additional capacity freed up by that was used for a coordinated-entry outreach Last year, Boulder Shelter for the Homeless discontinued this program for several reasons. First, it was not the most effective way to distribute cold-weather gear, so they consolidated that service with Deacon's Closet, which is operated by the First Presbyterian Church. This is a service that's been in the community for about 30 years. It's well-known. On Thursday mornings, people who are seeking clothing can go to Deacon's Closet on the corner of 16th and Walnut. In addition to providing a standardized time and location, Deacon's Closet can provide a more robust supply of cold-weather clothing than what was previously offered by Boulder County Cares. Second, the landscape and options for people experiencing homelessness who might not stay at the shelter had changed very significantly from the 1990s until recently, when the shelter made this decision. First, there's additional sheltering options. So in the 1990s, when they started, it was the shelter beds, and that's it, and now we have the additional Path to Home. We have our severe weather shelter. In addition, when Boulder County Cares started, there was not a drop-off detox location, and so if you were too intoxicated to be in a shelter environment, there was no option at that time, and now they will usually call law enforcement, I believe it is, right, Greg? If someone's in that condition, and they can be transported to detox, so that they can be in a safe location. Also, some other programs, non-traditional outreach programs, like our homeless outreach team, our municipal court navigator, have given additional options to people that might not seek services in the traditional way. So very different landscape than when that program started. And third, the shelter had some safety concerns about the volunteers seeking individuals out in unsheltered locations on winter nights. And since we talked about the coordinated-entry outreach pilot last year, I'll say that that did not get a lot of uptake, and so it was decided that was not the right method to try to provide or expand that service, and so when Boulder County Cares was discontinued, that program was also discontinued.
Wendy, real quick question. The coordinated-entry outreach was kind of the same as Boulder County Cares, except instead of offering gear, they were offering coordinated entry. Is that correct?
Basically, but, you know, but Greg, do you want to, is there anything you want to add to that, or does that pretty much sum it up?
Yeah, the goal was to try to find people who hadn't gone through coordinated entry, and for some reason couldn't make it to the locations. So we went to the jail, we went around with the hot team, we went to known locations where people would hang out and tried to encourage people to go through the coordinated-entry process on the site, so that we could get them into the system.
Beyond the specific program of Boulder County Cares, it would seem that certainly the larger concern is how we help people that are reluctant to come into shelter or to use services. This has been a big challenge historically for the city of Boulder, as well as every other community. Nationally, there are a lot of people that have difficulty operating in a shelter environment, and that's why about 2/3 of those experiencing chronically homeless, chronic homelessness nationally are unsheltered. That's double the rate of the general homeless population. So this is something that existed in the old system. It's a challenge that exists in the new system. Here in Boulder, we do have some great programs, such as our police department, homeless outreach team, and our municipal court navigator, that present non-traditional avenues for people to get connected to services and housing that they might not otherwise seek out. And the new Homeless Solutions for Boulder County system also helps these people by providing more pathways to housing, because there is more housing. And often, people that can't be successful in shelter can be successful in housing. However, how to get people housed that are reluctant to use services is an ongoing challenge, and the county-wide one-year system review seeks more information about those not engaging in services.
Question.
I just kind of have a question on that, then. So if they don't do well in the shelter, then why do they do well in the severe weather shelter? I mean--
Oh, you mean people who choose, who might be assigned to Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, but they choose to use the severe weather shelter service instead?
Yeah, like if they want, don't, yeah, I mean, I'm just confused. I mean, if you're saying 2/3 aren't comfortable in a shelter environment, isn't severe weather really similar?
Actually, what I was saying nearby about the 2/3 was that of people meeting the definition of chronic homelessness, nationally, about 2/3 of them, on average, are unsheltered. So they're living most of their time outside, and that's because they have a hard time often operating in a shelter environment.
So they're not even using the severe weather either?
Yeah, yeah, there's some people, I mean, both in our community and in every community in this country, that really have a hard time using any type of shelter.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
So I think we're down to our last slide, next steps. So Homeless Solutions for Boulder County is in the process of a systems review of the first year of the new system, and results of this review are scheduled to come to council March 19th. Staff would recommend waiting on decisions on severe weather shelter until the review is complete, and so the service can be looked at in the context of a more comprehensive look at the system. We would recommend not expanding nights of severe weather shelter, as it seems maybe unlikely to achieve the intended goals and may have negative unintended consequences. If funding for shelter is increased now or any time at the future, we would recommend it be matched with greater increases in housing funding, probably at least $5 in housing funding for every dollar of shelter spending, and that would help to offset any setbacks for long-term residents seeking housing. And, you know, to go back to the budget discussion we had earlier, since October 2017, we started the new system, we've increased our spending on kind of shelter-related programs by about $1 million.
Yeah, that's what I was--
Yeah, we've increased by about $1 million annually on shelter-related programs. We've increased by about $200,000 annually on housing-related programs.
But with a caveat, right, that a portion of that's going to pathway to home, which is getting people to solutions, right?
Well, what I would say is--
As opposed to the extreme weather stuff?
I mean, what we're investing, I mean, the shelter, the shelter-related programs we're investing in now are much better, are, you know, much better than what we've invested in in the past, and that's because, to your point, and they are housing-focused. It's really not just come in and let's shelter you for the night. It's really come in and let's work with you on a plan to get out of this situation.
We've sort of been asking our questions as we've gone along, is there--
So can I just get a clarification? So Wendy, did you say on the $1 million for, in addition, that was spent on sheltering, there's been only about $200,000 additional for housing?
That's correct.
Okay. But this is what I want to understand, is part of the sheltering is the program to get people to housing. So I guess, Lisa, I don't, that's not exactly the five to one that we're trying to measure up, right? Because don't we count some of the pathway to home as the mechanism to get people to housing?
Well, I mean, here's what I'll say. We, at both Boulder Shelter for the Homeless and Path to Home, those organizations have changed the way they work and really maximized what we already have in the community in housing, and been really creative in ways to pull down more resources and get people into non-traditional resources. And so, you know, the money that we're spending on those, you know, those housing-focused navigation services, I mean, those are important services. But no matter how hard the people at those organizations work, no matter how creative they are, how scrappy they are, at the end of the day, you still have to have someone, you still have to have something to navigate someone to. You have to have something to case-manage someone to.
So--
Okay, I'll go next.
Well, I wanted to put out there as part of this discussion, as I was talking to Isabel, about if we wanted to do more, what would be the next step? And of course, she didn't offer this freely, so just, you know, she's not advocating for anything. I said, "Yeah, but I want to know." So, just to clarify. But it was to do, I'll just, you used the word abbreviated voucher system. She talked about it as short-term rental subsidies, but that's kind of confusing, because it's not a short-term rental. But, so kind of temporary, basically, people that have, like, disability payments but can't get the down payment for the apartment to, you know, in the first month's rent to get it going, but have the resources to help, you know, continue on, aren't, so not the totally destitute, but the people that are challenged, that putting some money into a fund to do that would be another way of sort of expanding upon our voucher system, but hitting another part of the population, which is, like I said, sort of maybe, I don't know the right words, but basically, not totally at the end of the spectrum, but more in the middle, like, has some capacity to get back on their feet but needs some help. So anyhow, I also thought that that was an interesting notion that could leverage what we're doing, and free up more capacity, frankly, because occasionally, we're getting close to capacity to actually get some of those folks that have the capacity to keep it going into apartments. So I wanted to throw that out there as something that we consider or ask staff to consider, but I would love us to consider putting some money towards that. So I'll just throw that out there.
So I have a question that's somewhat related. I look at the slide five that we have here, which is new housing resources. One question is, when are those new from? Like, what, in the last two years, last three years?
Let's get back to the slide first.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's lagging.
There you are.
Yep. Can you ask your question again?
Sure, sure. So new housing resources since when?
Since a year ago.
A year ago, okay. So I add this up as something like 150 new resources. Do these add up? I mean, is that the way it works?
So the, so the first one, the vouchers, that's, that's an impact to the city budget. Some of the other resources, so when we were talking to 200,000, we're talking in respect to the city Boulder's budget towards homelessness services. So some of the other vouchers that have come to the Boulder County Housing Authority that are supporting, you know, vouchers both in our city as well as throughout the county, that's obviously from state and federal funds. The units proposed for supportive housing over the next three years, those 70, those are affordable housing projects that were in the making, and we didn't put additional funds in, but through the funding agreements that we had with each one of those developers, we made it, and we're making it with all of our funding agreements, a component that every, virtually every affordable housing project that comes on board will have some PSH units allocated in it. So it's not an impact to our budget, but it's a, it's a change in our strategy.
Yeah, I'm not asking it from a budget perspective. I guess what I'm curious to make sure that I understand is, that looks like over the next three years, we get 70 units of permanently supportive housing. You've already procured 11. Some of these, as you say, will be county-wide, but it sure looks to me like, you know, depending on how much of the support from the county that we get, this is something on the neighborhood of 100 new housing units intended for places for people to exit.
Yep, and the one at the bottom is worth sort of highlighting as well. That's one that Bob Yates sent out to city council, I think, a couple of weeks ago. So the VHP Board allocated three different properties, so that five to seven is annually. So as vacancies become available in one-bedroom apartments, they're going to allocate them towards PSH units. So they're, they're basically shifting some of their existing units to focus on PSH. So that number will, that will grow up to, I think, about 60 or 70 units in total between those three properties.
It won't necessarily be limited to those three properties. It's a bit of a pilot.
And it won't necessarily be limited to those three properties, it's a bit of a pilot. BHP has, gosh, we're 30 properties, is that sound right? You know, so this is only a small fraction of BHP's properties. These three happen to be senior housing, and, you know, one cohort that we want to address is homeless seniors. And so this was a good place to start, but it won't necessarily end here.
So, I mean, the only reason I bring this up, and it's kind of related to what Zan was saying in a way, is we're doing a lot of leveraging of existing resources, and so if we do choose to increase this support, it's only going to lever up, it seems to me. So, to the extent that the suggestion was more money towards housing, permanently supportive types of housing, or the kind of program that you described at five to one, I mean, it seems like it's a bargain in the sense that it's being spent very effectively and using coprograms to try and grow it.
So the other thing that I'll add is, so we've also done this in some of our preservation units, but this is, this is one component, which is the, which is the units, but then you'll also see some of these are vouchers. So you need to get the units, then you need to figure out how you're going to pay for them. So the vouchers that we put in place with that 200,000 was actually focused on homeless individuals of the highest need, because they have the highest financial impact on our community. So that was the focus of that pilot program. What Zan is suggesting is another segment of our homeless population, those that aren't the highest need, but maybe it's an easier path to get them into housing.
Presumably cheaper.
And cheaper.
It's a bridge rather than ongoing support.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And we need a combination of all of those to make it work.
Well, I mean, I'll just say, this is wonderful work. It's, I think the prospect for exits for people, or homeless in our community, is higher than it has been in a while, and the focus of the entire system is now trying to get people into that. So, I just thought I would dig into that a little bit.
One thing that's not even up here is diversion. You might remember that for the last couple of years, we funded EFA in a rental systems program, so when families who are in danger of losing their housing, whether it's apartments or foreclosure, need a little bit of funding for a short time, I think it's a maximum three months, can receive funding from the city through EFA to avoid, and the success rate's like phenomenal, I mean, really, really high.
It's been really, really successful.
Yeah, yeah, so that doesn't even, that's not even up here.
So, Aaron, Aaron's in the queue.
I mean, I'm going to go on to make larger points, if you want to get something quick in.
I just wanted to say, and Jane, you would have to help me, or maybe you can, but I think we've been putting several hundred thousand dollars a year into the EFA increase into the EFA's budget, and we've been doing that for, I don't know, three years?
I think it has been three years, and we, the first year we did it as a pilot, but then we made it ongoing.
Right.
Yeah.
Which has been great.
Yeah, thank you for saying that, Lisa, because you all are doing amazing work on the housing front. I mean, this list, thank you for drilling into that, Sam, of all the units that you're bringing online is amazing, and it is more, I think, housing options than we've ever had, I think, for folks to exit from homelessness. And we are, I mean, I think there's money going into those programs in a lot of ways through our affordable housing program, through this EFA rental assistance program, which I think counts as housing support. So, and the new system is experiencing some incredible successes, so I think when Zan and I bring this forward, it's in no way to say that we should stop doing housing-focused shelter and shift to, you know, putting Band-Aids on emergency shelter. I mean, the December through February nights that you mentioned, I mean, it's one day out of 15. I mean, that's, that's a really, if it were just that time period, it's a really minor increase in the number of shelter nights offered. So I think the point that I would like to make is that, you know, we just, it's about still having, making sure that people have incentives to move to housing, to have incentives to move to program-based shelter, but that those, that part of that set of incentives is not kind of the stick of forcing people to sleep outside on a very cold night. So I think we can still balance these goals, we can still be focused on housing, we can still work on incentives to move people into these programs and move people into housing, while still providing a kind of a bare-bones, warm place to sleep at night during the winter. So, and I think you can, you could do that in a variety of kind of creative ways. For example, right now, severe weather shelter does not include a coordinated entry requirement, right? I mean, that's just when it's open, you walk in, you sleep, and you're done. We could add a coordinated entry requirement, maybe it's after three nights, say, so that we make sure that people are at least know what's in the system, that the system knows about them. You know, we could, you know, we could kind of tune the distinction between severe weather shelter and Path to Home such that, you know, there's, there are those additional incentives. So, I think this is, the change to a nightly severe weather sheltering for a focused period in the winter is something that we can do without losing our larger program goals and successes of the coordinated entry program. So I just want to make those points, and I'll let council...
Well, can I ask you a question about that, Aaron? Because in discussions with various folks who are doing shelter provision, how would you enforce the coordinated entry requirement? Because there's already been some complaints that people are coming in and, you know, night after night staying in the sphere where they're sheltering, which we want to give them that option to do, but they're not engaging in the services, and that they're seeing an increase of that behavior. So I, I just, you put out the idea that we could do a requirement, how would you enforce the requirement?
Well, so when I say coordinated entry, I mean the process of coordinated entry, going in and doing however long it takes to register, and that at a certain point that, I mean, that that becomes a requirement of doing severe weather. You have, oh, hey, you know, you get one more night of staying here before, then the next morning you have to go to coordinated entry, otherwise, you know, it's...
Isn't that helpful?
Not for severe weather.
One night, well, you don't have to coordinate, do coordinated entry for severe weather.
Right.
Would it be, would it be helpful for me to clarify?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, at all of our programs, so Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, Path to Home, you know, you come in, you can stay one night, and then you're told, "Okay, but before you come back tomorrow night, you have to go to coordinated entry." And that is also the goal of severe weather shelter right now. But as a practical, on-the-ground matter, if you come back the second night to severe weather shelter and you have not gone to coordinated entry, you will be let in.
And let me ask you another question. I mean, how do you ID people? So if people have come in for severe weather sheltering, I mean, I'm sure people, staff, get good at recognizing the faces of people who have been there a couple, three nights in a row, but you've got no formal identification for folks. And so, other than recognizing the face of somebody who's coming in, how would you know that, even in Aaron's case, right, so three nights and then you have to go through somehow, how would you know that that person is a person who's been there three nights in a row, or 10 nights in a season, or whatever, if they haven't ever gone to coordinated entry?
You're correct, Sam. I mean, people, people aren't showing ID at the door, and so I am not sure of the exact nuts and bolts of how, how you ensure the same person, I mean, you know, I know they're recording it, but I don't, I mean, Bill, are you available to answer that question? Okay.
I'm Bill Sweeney. I work with the Bridge House, I formerly ran Boho. So the answer to your question, Wendy, is that we record over 90% of the people who come into severe weather shelter in the BCC system. So that's regardless of their status. If someone has not been through BCC, has not been through coordinated entry, we will still enter them in the Boulder County Connect system. So over 90% are recorded there, and we can track readmissions through that, at least for that portion of the population.
Do they give you their names?
Yeah, we use whatever name they provide. If you want to be Roy Rogers, we just ask that you be Roy Rogers every night.
I see, so you're asking a name, and you're putting a name down, and most people are happy to give you a name.
They give us a name, and we also, we, since we are using Boulder County Connect, we are also dipping into their very deep register of names.
Okay, thank you.
Do you ask where they came from?
No, we don't. Yeah. That's, that's a part of the coordinated entry process.
Okay, well, so the, I think the issue around the severe weather shelter isn't really about money, as was just demonstrated, it's, it's, I think, the weighing of compassion and being strategic and not undermining incentives. I think, I guess we wanted to put it out there that we would like to try to have our cake and eat it too on that front, and I guess in the interest of time, maybe to get a sense of how people are feeling about that. Yeah.
I would like to have our cake and eat it too. I hear what staff is saying, and that it would be preferable to wait another couple of months, but the potential unintended, or potential unintended consequences, we won't know one way or the other until we actually experience whatever happens if we do open up the severe weather sheltering for the rest of the year.
Mary?
So, I would not support the nod, I would not be a nodding head, because this, we're on the road to systems change, and this is what we should be doing. I volunteered for five years at the Boulder Shelter, cooking breakfast every Friday morning, and for five years, the same faces every day. For five years, you would see the same people over and over again, and, and the problem just felt intractable. And to hear the changes that are happening and the stories that Kurt shared, it starts to feel like something that can happen, but it can't happen if we go back to the old system. There's a, there's a book that I read years ago that's called Begging for Change, and that person, Robert Egger, who wrote the book, had kind of the same feeling. He would go out and feed people, and he just felt, this isn't working. You know, where are the people, where are the counselors? Where are the people that do job training? Where's the support team? And he's set his mind to change things, and he has in several cities where he started the DC Central Kitchen and the LA Central Kitchen. So, it's systems change, and this is what needs to happen, to actually move people away from poverty. It happens in human services a lot, where it's the pity approach. Let's pity people, and in pitying people, you hold people down. And this is not about holding people down, this is about giving them that hand up and moving them out of that situation. So I'm not going to support the nod if I...
I, did you? I just had a question of Mary. Mary, my understanding is that this wouldn't negate the system that's in place, but it would be auxiliary to it, at least for this coming short period. So, and, and that's, I mean, I understand that we, the other one would, would continue apace, and hopefully we could see what would happen in terms of getting some outcomes as well, if people return again and again and again.
But it's my understanding that in doing this, it would undermine the system, that it, that the, the strategy that is currently working, and the data is proving that out. And I would like to see us keep going and seeing when staff has the full picture of all the data, and showing us what an entire year's worth of data looks like, I, you know, I want to keep moving forward with that.
Lisa, then Bob.
So, I will not be a nod if I either. I think this is a complete step backwards. Since I've been on council and before, this has been what people would call a wicked problem, and I think there's been a lot of compassion, a lot of community dialogue, a lot of desire to improve people's lives. And I feel, I totally agree with Mary, that the pity approach just keeps people down and does never bring them forward, and it keeps them in their same place. And there are times where you really have to strongly incent people that there is a much better outcome on the other side than hanging out on the street. And I would also say that this is not auxiliary, this is going back to 2014, when we had the very lax and more liberal and compassionate approaches, which resulted in many more deaths on the street. And the mental issues, the drug abuse issues, the domestic abuse issues, these are not issues that get resolved on the street, they require intervention. And I think giving a nod of five is saying you're okay with people staying in their current state, and also that they don't need to change. Well, they do need to change, and I know, because I was one of those, and if that intervention hadn't happened, then I would not be sitting here today. And I've seen it from both sides, and I am totally in support of where staff is, and I think we have done so much constructive efforts that it has really helped. I think there's also the problem of mixed messages. So as I said a moment ago, we've been trying for a long time to improve the homeless situation, and nothing has worked as much as the coordinated system, the work between the Boulder homeless shelter with Bridge House, with Path to Home, with our navigational services, with our navigational coordinator in, in our court system. People need help, and to allow them to continue to flounder is not compassionate. So I won't be nodding in favor of this. And I also think staff's argument about, about, you know, if you look at surrounding towns, if you just look at the data, if you have the data and look at the evidence, which I do as a scientist, then going backwards is not the direction to go. And I also think you need to weigh in with the public, who also deserve and expect to have a semblance of a, of a normal space. And Boulder has, for decades, gone beyond what others have, or have even wanted to. We've gone way beyond, and I don't think going backwards is a good idea.
I'm not going to be as eloquent as Maria and Lisa have been, but I agree with them.
Okay, Sam?
Well, this is a very difficult issue, because it is not about the money. So if you look, the number of nights and the number of dollars, this is just not about that. And so, it really becomes more, do we undermine our system by doing this? And we've had some people tell us that we will. I mean, there have been, we got a letter from the county today, and we got another one from Isabel, and I understand their fear. So I do, because we had a time when there was a parallel system, and we've seen the numbers tonight for what that parallel system... numbers tonight for what that parallel system did, and it did not move people towards exits. That's the problem. So, whatever we do, we have to preserve this new integrated system that we have, because it's working. Greg, thank you for doing the transition to the, the shelter beds and the way they are, because I think it's showing itself to work. I think that is a huge step in the right direction. At the same time, we do not want people who do not want to be in these programs, the service-resistant population, to pay for it with, you know, serious consequences or death, right? And so, that's, what is the most compassionate thing to do, is what I'm looking for. And there's an argument for what Lisa and Mary are saying, which is that the most compassionate thing is you get people to services and get them to exits, and I agree with that. We want a gradient that pushes people who are accessing shelter towards the services that will help them resolve the issues that keep them from being in shelter. So, you know, it's hard for me to make a decision, but the, the part about the compassion that I do like about the cold weather sheltering is to look at, is there a way that we can make it even more humane than it is today without undermining the rest of our system? So, I'm going to come up with a proposal to raise the, the limits on the temperature. So, rather than eliminate them, because I think that does send the wrong message. I think that creates a parallel system and gives the message that we don't focus on that. So, I sent you all this document that kind of looked at 70 or so different cold weather sheltering systems across the US. And the, by far, the most popular number is 32 degrees to trigger cold weather sheltering, and you can see why. But 32 degrees is pretty cold, and it's pretty cold when you spend eight or 10 hours out in it, if that's what's going to happen. So, I, I would see an alternate way here might be to raise the temperature, because the recommendation, and I'm going to try and tie this to a criteria or a recommendation, the recommendation of the doctor who's quoted in that document that I sent out is to raise the temperature to 40 degrees if you intend to have a temperature-triggered limit. So, I will put that out there as a potential way to increase the likelihood that people won't, you know, or decrease the likelihood that somebody will have hypothermia on our streets. But I don't want to send the message that undermines the system. And if that's, you know, I understand that that compromise is just that, it's a compromise, but I'm willing to put it out there, but I'm not willing to take away the, I'm not willing to nod to say, I want the shelter open every night.
Oh, Mirabai hasn't spoken yet. Did you want to speak?
Just, can I ask staff, based on what Sam's proposed, is that, I understand this is very, you know, quick for you to answer, but in your eyes, does that compromise undermine, undermine the process?
Before they answer?
No.
I think one, I mean, one clarification on Sam's proposal is, Sam, right now, we have triggers that are essentially 32 dry and 38 wet. So, are you proposing 40 degrees regardless of precipitation?
Yep, that was my thought. I mean, it's a little better for wet, it's significantly better for dry. I'm open to-
And it's simple.
And it's simple. I'm open to brainstorming, but I also think that the fact that we're raising it above the current level for both conditions is a step in the right direction.
So, wait, wait, look, so, go ahead and respond, though.
Well, I mean, this is, is tough, because we're Housing and Human Services people, we're not meteorologists, and so, I mean, off the top of my head, I can't, you know, look at the impact of that in the community and see how many days, how many nights that means, because it, when you look at how many nights we're open now with the current triggers, I would tend to think that that would greatly expand our sheltering scenario. And so, so, yeah, I think, you know, for that specific question, we'd have to see if we can figure out how many days that would hit, but my initial reaction is, is a lot of concern about the proposal and about it undermining the system.
What about, okay, wait a minute.
Wow, sorry, I was still-
Can I add something? I think it probably has to do with the dates that you're talking about as well, which months, or is it the entire season from October through the end of March?
I was thinking the whole season. I mean, if it's going to be a standard that's based around impact on human health, right, if, or chance that somebody's going to become ill or have hypothermia, then I don't, I don't know why it would matter. I mean, it would be the whole sheltering season. And I see the financial impact as being fairly minor, but I'm much more concerned about your opinion and others. I mean, to be frank, Isabel's reaction was, well, I'd rather see that than having it taken completely away. When I talked with her about it, Erin, maybe you can add color, because you were there for that conversation as well, but at the same, but she said, I would rather see that than have the, the shelter open all season. So, who knows? I mean, compromises are just that, they're compromises, and I see the motivation that Zan and Erin bring to this and that Cindy supports. I mean, I understand it, but I, at the same time, wouldn't want to do anything that seriously compromises the ability to push people towards services as part of our sheltering.
If I could just add one more thing. So, I, I think it's difficult for us to, to respond to that. We've presented our ideas around this. I think as, the way we would measure this going forward is the number of people that may be turned away from severe weather shelter, and what the impact would be on, on those numbers. So, we would really want to track that. If that increases the number of homeless people in our community that are, are trying to get services, above and beyond what services we currently have, that would be an impact that we would want to monitor.
I mean, that's one of the reasons I asked Greg the question I did, which is that I think ultimately, we would like to increase the amount that we can take, so that even, you pointed out in your letter, that even with today's conditions, that we could end up with people being turned away, right? Changing nothing, leaving the system just the way it is, and we heard a few instances in which it may have occurred. And so, I think that's definitely, whatever criteria we choose, we would like to have enough capacity to shelter the people who need shelter. And so, that would be a point of further discussion, maybe before next sheltering season, is what are our options to be able to increase that capacity for severe weather sheltering in a way that still, you know, would only affect half a dozen nights a year or something like that at the shelter, so.
So, giving it back to Mirabai. Cindy wants to make-
Suzanne, extend the meeting.
Yep.
Second?
All those in favor? Yeah. So, Mirabai then, Cindy wants a comment, and then I see you, Mary.
So, then, just kind of as a follow-up, when we initially raised the severe weather shelter temperature to 32, do you believe in, you know, your best knowledge, did that have an impact on the coordinated entry, the efforts that we were doing there?
You mean, you mean when it changed in the middle of last season, it changed late January? When we look at, when we look at the numbers of, of people seeking sheltering services for the remainder of the season, it is, it's difficult to track a, a specific impact for the second part of the 2017, 2018 winter season. Now, we have had some people, when they look at the real difference, we've had much higher numbers this season, starting in October, and there's, there's lots of theories around that, different theories. We don't know the reason why, but one of the theories is that, you know, some people plan on like more of a seasonal basis, if you will, where they're going to go through, where they're, they're going to go, and that, you know, when our criteria changed to be more similar to the previous BOHO criteria, then that changed some people's plans in terms of coming to Boulder this season. Now, again, that's one of the theories that's, you know, talked about when we look at the difference between last season and this season, so we don't know that.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess I would, I mean, this is just such a rough topic to discuss, I think it's going to be hard, it's dichotomous, we're kind of damned if we do and damned if we don't in terms of the community. Half of us are either going to love us or hate us. But I think that the, the evidence that staff has support, or shown us, the data, for me, is undeniable, and I think that the way that Mary and Lisa really put it is extremely clear that this is the way that we help people in our community. I, I almost feel that if we don't continue along this line, I mean, we're, or the evidence or the data, I mean, we're harming people otherwise. I mean, that's kind of really what it breaks down to, if you want to be cut and dried about it, so, for me at least. So, I don't think that I would give my nod of five. As for Sam's proposal, I mean, if you're already concerned, I, I don't know, I'm a little torn, I guess I'm, I'm willing to try to compromise, because again, a very difficult subject, but the biggest thing is that we find a way to get these people off the street and into shelter and second chance.
So, I just wanted to say that I think it's a misnomer to call it a pity factor. I think using that kind of terminology is as bad as saying nimby, or something like that, to characterize people who care about their neighborhoods and how they live. The other thing that I would say is that we're talking about people here, when we're talking about people in conditions of homelessness, and we can't control everything. We can try our best to do what we can to help, and there are carrots and there are sticks, but it doesn't mean that we're going to be able to control everyone, and I don't think anyone up here would say that, that you have absolute control, and this is how we're going to make people act in Boulder, by having these systems. And I'm, I totally applaud the systems, I think you've done amazing things in this past year. But, I mean, I just would try to dispel the belief that we have control over human beings to the degree that we can actually make them follow the very systems that we want to.
Mary?
So, I won't support your proposal, Sam, because it's essentially another way of opening the shelter, every, the severe weather shelter every night. And I'll use a different terminology other than pity, I will use the difference between taking a deficit-based approach and an asset-based approach. What we're doing by opening up the severe weather shelter every night is using, believing that people cannot move out of that situation. An asset-based approach is what I would rather see, where you believe in people, and you believe that people can change, and you can believe that the system will get them out of that situation. So, I, I believe very strongly in that, and I will read something that Kurt actually wrote to us, and, and I believe it's, and, "If people remain on the streets and shelters are expanded, more deaths will occur. This was shown true when Boulder tried this a few years ago. In my view, it is not humane for individuals in our community to spend years of their life languishing in shelter, when through services and housing, they can be stabilized. Our shelters need to get smaller, and programs of substance need to get bigger." And that's what I witnessed in my five years of serving breakfast, it was people languishing. I saw people, two brothers, die, and it wasn't helping, so.
Okay. We're going to speed this up, in the interest of time. We have Erin, we have Lisa, let's problem solve, and then we're going to tie a bow on this.
Okay. Well, I'll just, I'll respond a little bit to what you said, and then we, I'll, I'll be quiet. But just, Cindy, thanks, you, thank you for your words. I mean, there's, there's such a strong difference between pity and compassion, and, and I totally respect my colleagues, I realize you're, everybody's coming from a place of trying to help folks that are in need, but I think the data is inconclusive, the numbers are too, this data sets are too small, the numbers are too small, we don't know all the factors. So, I think we can make interpretations, but I don't think the data is anywhere remotely, isn't remotely cut and dried, and, and, and I think that what we're talking about here is, if there's somebody, if we offer somebody a, a warm place to sleep when it's 33 degrees outside, that is in no way saying that we don't believe in their ability to get off the streets. It's about saying, on that day, on that cold day, there's a warm place for a night, and in the meantime, you got to keep working on the Housing Focus Shelter as hard as you can. And I support additional resources towards our housing efforts, but it's certainly not, it's not, not believing in people to offer them a place to sleep.
Okay. I know you're in the queue, I guess all I want at this point is, is action, since people have kind of given their, their spiel, so, no more spiel's and just talk about.
I, I am completely where Mary is. I am not going to give a nod of five, I'm going to defer to staff and their recommendation, and I think it is a compassionate recommendation, and I think there's been a lot of investment, and we need to invest more in housing.
Okay.
So, and I'm also on the Sam's thing, I don't think it moves it anywhere, I think it doesn't help, and so, I'm not interested in that, I, so.
And for those of you that are weighing in on Sam's, I'm just curious, is any increase-
No.
-the same as 40 degrees, is there a number less than that, that, is it compromise we could agree to?
No.
No?
Nope.
Nope?
Well-
Just looking, I'm-
I'll, I'll say probably no. I mean, I could draw another compromise, not to counter, I, I do agree that the 32 and 38 are confusing with precipitation, so, I mean, maybe there's a number like 35, which happens to be halfway between 32 and 38, we just say 35 degrees across the board. I actually happen to agree with Mary, I don't think we should be moving this, but if, in the interest of trying to get five people to agree, I would be willing to look at a number. I think it needs to be lower than 40, though.
Well, I mean, in the interest of making things simple, we could make it just 38, and just call it that. But, I, I mean, to, to me, it's going to change things by a handful of days, right? So, so it will be three or four or five days, and so, there will be fewer days in the winter where people who are otherwise service-resistant will have to find a place to sleep outside. And so, you know, Bob, if you're interested, you can name a number that would suit you, I don't mean to force this, it's just a, it's just an attempt to-
Right. I mean, this is all false precision, I mean, we, when we picked 32, that was, that was a made-up number, I mean, there's a elegance to 32, I think we were at 20 before, right? Or, I don't remember, it was a low number.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so, these are all just picking numbers out, I mean, it's, it's miserable. 32, 35, 38, 40, it's miserable, right?
Well, I tried to, the reason I sent the resource out was just so that we could see both what other communities do and what, you know, recommendation of advocates is, so, if, if we wanted to raise it, it would make me feel like we have tried to do both things at once. I mean, you talk about wanting to have your cake and eat it too, this is a way to try and do that, to not undermine the system with messaging, but also to have a few less days when people are stuck out in the street. But, Bob, it looks like you can say yes or no on this one, kind of.
Can you put back up the slide that shows what our neighbors are doing? Because the stuff you sent out was great, Sam, but it was nationwide, and I think what our numbers, our neighbors do is pretty instructive, because if we're a lot higher than our neighbors, it's, it's a pretty short bus ride to Boulder.
Yeah.
I mean, we're already higher than everybody else, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I, I, you know, Mary has persuaded me, I think, I think we just need to, to stay the course for the remainder of this year, get the data, and, and keep with what we have.
Okay. I didn't really speak to this, because I sent out the hotline, so, I'm going to let that speak for myself. So, that is what it is, we don't have a nod of five. I want to throw back out there, though, my other idea, which is, and maybe we can have staff go look at this and bring this back in March, but I do like the idea- staff go look at this and bring this back in March, but I do like the idea of, I do think we're on the right track, and I'm very excited about it. I wish we could tighten our safety net a little bit, but we just had that discussion, and that's not going to happen. But the idea of the abbreviated vouchers to try to leverage even more and hit more of the population, that we could move out to housing quick, more quickly because they require less assistance. I think that has a lot of promise. That'll cost us a little bit more money, but I think it also helps us get to our goal faster. And we're a community that has the means to do that, and we're coming up with a good model. So I guess, what do you guys think about directing staff to investigate that and bring back a proposal on those regards?
So staff is coming back shortly with, when, when things, when the whole, all the data is in, so we can kind of suggest that, and then they can bring it back then.
Yeah, and I was going to suggest that, I think they're coming back like in the middle of March. That's, that's less than two months. Does that, and then we'll have one year of data, and then we can, they can bring that to us, their recommendation.
And could we ask as part of that for what, ideas on what resources we might be able to devote to making, to having more exits from homelessness?
More what?
More exits from homelessness?
And this might be one of them.
Yeah, including this.
If there's better ideas on that one, then of course, you know about them.
Could I just speak to one? When I spoke with Isabel, she talked about, and it's, it was up on the list, it was the master lease, that they have two houses, they have master leases with Har Hashem Homes. And there are six people, three in each house, not exceeding the occupancy. And they are paying market rate and for, with a very small subsidy, so.
And this is exactly along those lines?
Okay.
So this is, that was essentially maybe a pilot for what I'm talking about.
And they're very excited about that. They see a lot of possibility.
I think it's also worth repeating, as we wrap up here, something that staff told us at the very beginning of the presentation. We have 210 beds that are open 365 days a year, 210 beds that are open all year long, regardless of the temperature. And so I'm, I think maybe some of the people that spoke to us or some of the people that wrote to us were under the misimpression that we only do this during the wintertime and only do it at thresholds. We provide 210 beds all year round, and I want to make sure that, that the community understands that, that we're not cold-hearted and hard-hearted, and, and this, these are just the incremental of severe weather sheltering beds. I think it's really important to understand that.
I do want to say that I am very interested in, and this doesn't need to be a nod or anything, I don't want to be turning people away. When we have, if we have a criteria, that criteria needs to be our kind of bible at that time. And if we come to a point, because Kurt has warned us, that we are turning people away, I think we need to take very rapid action-
Agreed.
...to change whatever we need to change. Because if this is our criteria of compassion for people, and we're trying to protect them, then I would like staff to make sure and notify council if staff becomes aware that people have on both, both of our resources for severe weather sheltering have been turned away. Because I think that will be a time we need to address that. And even if it's going to take the rest of the season to address for some reason, or if there's something we can do in emergency to fix it, I just don't think it's humane for us to set, okay, here's where you can get off the streets under any circumstances, and then, oh, I'm sorry, we're turning you away because we're folding.
Completely agree.
I totally agree with that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sam.
Okay. Thank you all for that discussion, for the information staff, that was very helpful. Any process debrief?
I thought it went pretty well, given all the stuff we had in our table.
Done early.
We're done on?
Yep. The other thing, I'm very impressed with our staff, and tonight, we had really just outstanding presentations. And I said something to Bob about it, and he said, well, maybe part of that is that we've had study sessions in advance of the heavy things. So when we are clear, then it makes it easier for staff to do their work and to present a good, well-presented document that really is ready to go. And so we don't have people coming here and yelling or speaking to us. Everybody's okay. And so I just, you can pass that on. I just think that is great for everybody.
Okay. And on that note, Mayor, can I back up for a minute on the motion to extend? Who made that?
Bob did.
And who seconded? And was it unanimous?
Yeah.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Suzanne, I think one thing that we missed tonight was, we started the discussion about-